All right, it's 6:45. We do have a forum present. We appreciate each and every one of you here this evening. Mr. Clark is going to lead us in our pledges today. Thank you very much.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. We appreciate that. And Q is going to read our mission statement for us, please.
The TM board mission statement. Tulsa Midway Independent School District educates every student to be a lifelong learner, a person of integrity, and a positive contributor to society.
Thank you, Kim. All right, it's time for the public hearing on school first report. Mr. President.
Mr. President, members of the board, as you know, Texas Education Code requires an annual reporting of the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. Tonight, our chief financial officer, Philip Carroll, is going to provide that for us. Mr. Carroll?
As Mr. Carroll said, this is our annual report. One thing to remember, we are in the 2223 fiscal year. This is actually for the year of 2122. But the data that's being reviewed is actually from, is from the year before, 2021. So it actually goes over three years. And then, obviously, the purpose of it is just the way that states uses to evaluate the financial factors of all the school districts so they can come up with a way to give it a grade or give it a school card like schools like to do. And then it was officially adopted, but like I said, it covers three periods, but the data that you're going to see is from the 2021 school year. That's where all the analysis is coming from. And it does include some staff and student data as well, not just budget and financial data. And then those are the available ratings. It's pretty standard. A is 90, B is 80, C is 70. There isn't a D. If you get below a 70, it's considered substandard. And you get an F. The only thing new for this year is there were two indicators, number 10 and number 15, they're not being scored any longer. And indicators, there's four critical indicators at the beginning. We'll go over those more briefly. And then there's these things called ceiling indicators, which just mean if you don't hit a certain threshold for something, if you don't meet something here, then that means the maximum you can get is a B. Or if you need something here, the maximum you can get is a C. And then the critical indicators, these are the first four. These are the first more important. If you say no to any of these four, you automatically do not pass. But you have to turn your, you have to get your audit, your annual audit completed and submitted on time, and we did. And you have to have an unmodified opinion, which means your auditor said that your financial statements properly represent the financial status of the district, and ours did. You have to be on time with all your debt payments, and we are. And you have to make timely payments to the other government agencies that we deal with, teacher retirement, workforce commission, IRS, and other governmental agencies, and we are. So we passed that. Solvency indicators, they look at your fund balance. They look at what your fund balance is doing, if your fund balance has any big changes or anything like that. But we passed this indicator because our fund balance has not wavered, and we have more than 75 days of operating cash on hand. They just take, they just look at your cash at the end of the year. They look at your total budget. They divide it to kind of see about how much cash per day you use. And according to that, we were in good shape with our cash on hand, so we passed that indicator. And then this is also placing it too as our cash on hand adequate to meet our operating, our operations, and it is based upon their criteria. So we passed that and got all the points for that one. Then they look at, these are financial things. They look at your financial statements at the end of the year or your current assets, what's the ratio of your current assets, which is basically your cash in the bank, to your debts, your liabilities, which is our bonds and other things that we owe, and we have an adequate ratio. We have enough current liabilities to cover our current debt. So we got all 10 points on that one. And then there's another one that says, oh, if you're, obviously, if your revenues are more than your expenditures for the year, then obviously you pass. But even if your revenues are less than your expenditures, as long as you've got enough cash on hand, you're considered financially stable. And for this year, that ended, our revenues were higher than our expenditures, so we got all 10 points. Then they look at, oh, then they look at your budgeted revenues. At the October snapshot is when we report our budgets. And then they look at our actuals, and as long as our actuals were, revenues were pretty close, our actual revenues were pretty close to what our budgeted revenues, then you passed the indicator, and ours was. And then they look at your long-term liabilities, and they look to see if you've got enough in your debt service to cover your long-term debt. So we got all 10 points on that one, too. You know, I'm sorry, I take it back. Number 10 is not being scored anymore. They took that one out. And then, then they look at your, then they look at your property values, and are you collecting enough from your property values on your taxes to pay your debt? And we are, so we got all 10 points on that one. Then they look at this, they call it the school district's administrative cost ratio. That's something that once we submit all our data, all the districts and the data, and the states send their data to TEA, and they come up with ratios depending on how big your district is. And we are within, our administrative cost ratio is less than a threshold, so we get all 10 points on that one. And then, then they look at, they look at that relationship between your student enrollment and your staffing. If your student enrollment's going up, then it should, your staff should go up. But if your student enrollment stays stagnant or it starts to go down, your staff, your staff really should, line should follow your students. So they look at that indicator like over the last three years, and we were not out of line on those numbers, so we passed, and we got all 10 points on this one. And then they look at, so number 15 is not being scored anymore. That was the one where they were looking at, we would, we would project what our, what our enrollment was going to be, and if you, if your projections were off, you got deemed. But they're not, they're not scoring that one anymore. And then number 16, they look at, at the end of the year, we submit, after the audit's done, we submit all our data to TEA, and they do it through the P E system, and they double, and they make sure that your audit actually matches what your P E system says. And we have a very, 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 the only variance we have is the numbers get rounded, and so we passed that. And then they look at, then they look at something, more things from your audit. Did your audit, did you had any material weaknesses? We did not, so we passed. And then they also look and see if you had any material instances of noncompliance. We had none, so we got all 10 points on that one. And then, do we have everything financially posted on the website that we're supposed to have posted? We did, so we get all five points for that. And then, do I discuss the district's property values at board meetings? I don't all remember, but all the budget meetings, I talk about property values pretty much at every meeting, about how much they've gone up or how much they've gone down, because those help set our tax rates for the debt service. So we did that, so we passed that. And after all that, we got a perfect score of 100 this year. So we got an A this year.
Congratulations. It's very awesome.
And then another aspect is of the first is, we also have to, I have a little, on the other little handout, I have a little data kind of summarizing across the state. Actually, you know, we got 100 the year before, so we've got 100 two years in a row, and I have some neighboring school districts. And then if you look, I mean, a lot, last year, 11 school districts failed. This year, only eight failed. So 86% of the districts this year got an A, so. And then also, the current, I didn't present it here because the current superintendent contract is on the website, so we meet that criteria. And then we just have to list if anything, all the expenses that came out of the budget that related to the board or the superintendent, we have to list those. And there's, there's an exhibit on here that just breaks down all the costs broken down by any travel or any other reimbursements that we made to board members. This is strictly, and it's only for that one year, the 2021 year from August, from September 1 to August 31. And we just have to present, present that breakdown. Then we have to list if any school board member or superintendent received any gifts more than valued more than $250, and we reported all that as zero. And that concludes the first report. Any questions?
Let me just make a comment, Mr. Carroll. There is a lot of school districts that have received an A, but don't underestimate it. 100 is, is not all that common. I can tell you, I've, in all the years I've been a superintendent, I've never been associated with a school district that received 100, so congratulations.
Yes, that is, that is remarkable, keeping up with all the different things, the federal, state, local, and all of that. That's quite a task, make sure it's all in the right spot, right function and everything. All that, very commendable for you and your staff. That was very good, very commendable.
It's nice to have cash in the bank.
That definitely helped.
Yeah, especially, you know.
Any other questions?
Okay, well, Philip, on this, you mentioned the teachers, and then you picked the year that you're picking. We had such of a drop in, we had so many, so much lost during that timeline. Is it, we get to 100 because of the quickness that we, we, I mean, we were on a fast track to start hiring, obviously. We were replacing a lot of people. Did that, did that?
The only time that staffing comes into this is that one ratio that I told you is, they go back and they look the last three years, and they look at your ratio.
Were you low that, though?
No, no, because I mean, we've had a lot of turnover, but we were able to, we filled most of our positions. I'll tell you, we had some, we might have had some gaps, you know, that we couldn't immediately fill a position. But we were pretty successful in filling most of our positions. So our student, our, our ratio of students to employees is-
Stayed really good.
Has stayed in, in sync, which is what you want. Because you never want, if your enrollment's going up, then obviously your staffing should go up with it. But if your enrollment's going down, unfortunately, your staffing should go down to reflect that. You can't maintain a staff if your enrollment keeps going down. So our ratios for the last three years showed that we were not, we're still in sync. Our student-to-employee ratio is, has been constant or is in the same, it's on the same course.
Well, no, then that's good enough. I mean, that's just another high point for all the administrators in the room, too, because you guys stayed on top of all of that. To help us out, something that's good to know that we're not, that's far behind us, you know.
Right.
We could have been, I guess you could say.
Yes.
And, you know, kind of.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Philip.
The public hearing.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it, Philip. Another hard work went into that, for sure. We have about one minute before the start of the regular board meeting at 7 o'clock. So fast. Very good.
I'll have to bill in for entertainment next time. We're in church. Nobody signed up.
No, no, it's over here. Yeah, Andy just brought it up.
Oh, nobody else did.
Okay, it's 7 o'clock. We still have a forum present. It's time to go to the public comment, open forum. The next item on your agenda is public comment, which is the time for members of the audience to address the board of trustees. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the board's procedure for handling public comment. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board, except for that non-English speakers will be allowed a maximum of six minutes to address the board. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil, courteous. Avoid using profanity. Refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Yelling, inappropriate, uncivil, or discriminatory comments will not be permitted. Lastly, we ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own child. I also caution you that your public comment should not complain about individual school employees by name or position or other than your own child identify students. As presiding officer, I'm obligated to determine whether a person addressing the board has attempted to administratively resolve any complaints or grievances about which they want to address the board that involve district officers or employees. In the event your comment constitutes a complaint or charge against an employee or officer, it may be necessary for me to interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the school district's formal grievance process or to have the item heard in executive session depending on the nature of the complaint. Any concerns or complaints regarding individual district employees, students, or parents must be resolved via the district's grievance process, which can be found online and included in policies DGBA and FNG and GF Local. Thank you. And our first speaker is Divana Lucia?
Yes. Do I stand up or just sit down?
If you could come up here before we could hear, please, ma'am.
You timed her, or did I just go? Okay, on September 26, 2022, all TMI's cheerleaders were sent to meet with the cheer booster president, notifying them that the TMI's cheer booster was being put on suspension for two years. That was the decision made by a TMI high school administration. All TMI cheer parents were then notified that there would be a final cheer booster meeting on via Zoom on September 28, 2022. At this meeting, no agenda was provided, no detailed treasure report was read, and only a brief statement of the total of the bank in $31,214. During that meeting, this was voted as follows. Approximately $5,000 were given to the middle school for competition, and approximately $26,000 given to the high school. It was also voted that the middle school cheer coach would be given possession of the remaining boutique inventory. However, due to the alleged value of the inventory, approximately $10,000, the transfers would be, have to be approved by the school board. TMI high school administration stated that it would be put on the meeting's agenda to be discussed publicly to date, but as we can see, it has not. I bring you all this information so that you can see a large amount of funds that have been swiftly distributed in a matter of days due to the alleged animosity and conflict between some parents. That conflict was due to the cheer booster officers being asked to provide financial information about recent transactions. I provided a copy of a check that I feel deserves needs some answers from the cheer booster officers. Check number 1795, signed by the president of the cheer booster and a non-member of the cheer booster as a blank check on August 2, 2022, and later found out the amount was $5,911. And to a paid TMI's board member trustee. Also questions such as, why was the booster never set up as a 501(c)(3) as required by the U I L? Is the cheer booster club paying sales tax as required by law? Where's all the cash deposits and square transactions from the boutique sales and members dues? Why weren't the board officers found in their own cheer booster bylaws? Asking these financial transactions triggered a chain reaction to cover-ups, bullying complaints, and over, over panic between the TMI's school administration, cheer booster officers, and eventually the cheerleaders of the high school, where some were using their possession of power to bully the families that were questioning the booster finances. TMI high school administration was made aware of the bullying, and the response was that only addresses physical conflict, not verbal bullying. Instead of addressing the underlying causes of the bullying, the TMI high school administration gave the bullies and their families even more power by suspending the booster club. So no further questions could be asked, and yet the bullying continued by the varsity cheer co-captain and the J D coach. I think we can all read between the lines and see that there's a common thread between leadership of the booster club, leadership at both varsity and J D coaching levels, and a prospect of the election resulting in additional family member gaining a seat on the TMI's board, place five. If these questions do not get raised today, then when would they be heard?
Thank you, Mrs. Lucia. Thank you very much for your comments.
Mr. President.
Yes.
With the information that we've just been given, I think this needs to go on the next agenda, and it needs to be reviewed.
Yes, ma'am.
So if that can be please added to the next agenda?
Add that to the next agenda?
Make note of that, please. Thank you. All right, we're going to our discussion action items. All right, the presentation, Warpath Academy.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is a big deal. This is a significant transformation of Tulsa Midway High School that will culminate in over 100 different pathways for our students to take advantage of. We will partner with A&amp;M Kingsville, which we'll see tomorrow. We'll sign the agreement. Coastal Bend College and a limited agreement with Delmar College, as well as pathways that will be provided by teachers at Tulsa Midway High School. There's been a significant amount of work that's gone into this, and I'm pleased to let, allow Mahogany Garza, who through collaboration with Mr. Alvarado, Mr. Reese, and others at the Tulsa Midway High School, is quickly making this a reality. So, Mahogany, you're on.
So we're going to talk about the Warpath Academy. Whenever we were first starting to think about bringing more advanced academics to our students, we tried to set goals. So goal one was, first off, to increase student access to free dual-credit courses. We were able to do this, so we're able to offer 104 different dual-credit courses to our students next school year. Goal number two was to increase the number of attainable post-secondary credentials for our students. And we're also able to do this for this next school year. Up to 32 industry-based certifications, four Level 1 certificates, and four associate degrees. And then goal three was to increase the work-based learning opportunities for our students. And we are definitely able to do this through 19 different programs of studies. And that is with like local automotive shops, DPS as well, for our law enforcement program, CCPD. We're also able to partner with like, for example, KeyWits and potentially Spawn South. All right, those are the partnerships we're definitely working on right now. We are going to utilize partnerships with, for number one, A&amp;M Kingsville, which we're going to be doing tomorrow. Students, freshmen and sophomore students will be able to take dual-credit courses while at campus, so that way they start the curriculum, they get the rigor, but they're still in our safety net. And then their junior and senior year, they're able to go to A&amp;M Kingsville to take courses on campus there. That way they get the integration, and it's not like they go to college and realize that there is no safety net. You know, it's all up to them to make it to class on time. All 42 credit hours that they are going to be taking or have the ability to take through Texas A&amp;M Kingsville are fully transferable to any public university in the state of Texas. It's the core. For Coastal Bend College, students are able to start taking dual-credit courses their freshman year, which is dependent upon the program they choose. So for example, if they choose automotive, they would start going to Coastal Bend College on Monday and Wednesday, their freshman and sophomore year, versus if they choose law enforcement for an associate, that would actually be taught on campus with our high school teacher. He has a master's degree, so he'll do that, and is actually working on his PhD. And then there are, I'm sorry, there are eight programs through Coastal Bend College. So if you take a look at this lovely brochure right here, all right, these are the programs we are going to be offering through the Warpath Academy. And then also something is informed advising. So we can give students all the opportunities in the world, but if we do not inform them correctly, if we don't show them the difference in the right pathway or maybe something that's going to lead them to get a lot of college debt, you know, we are all about informed advising. And that is something that we're actually going to be working on next month. And student choice. So we have a lot of band students. We have a lot of athletes. So in order to make this happen for them and to not in any way create any barriers, we are going to offer an AM and a PM schedule for students. So for example, if they are in band, they could do PM courses, which means they get the same opportunity as any other student that goes to TM. They get the same opportunity to go hold the same classes. They'll just take it in the afternoon. Enrollment. For the Warpath Academy, there are no barriers. So there is no TSI requirement. There is no EOC requirement, no requirements whatsoever, GPA, essays, anything. The only requirement they may run into is if a course requires them to pass the writing TSI, in which case they would take a semester off to pass that TSI and then continue on the next semester with A&amp;M Kingsville or Coastal Bend College.
We're also taking TSI much earlier than what's ever been done before. From a financial end, this isn't free. But as far as, it is to our parents, but someone has to pay the invoices. So what we're able to piece together is we have instructional materials allotment funding that qualify for an excess of over $100,000 to support textbooks. We have a planning P-Tech grant of $150,000.
$150,000.
And then we're going to have to kick in around $100,000 out of, from the general fund. Mr. Carroll and I have met with both Mr. Alvarado and Ms. Garza. We feel that in next year's budget, we're able to incorporate that expenditure so that we can open up these opportunities. Transportation will pay for itself with the allotment. It's just a golden opportunity for our families. And you all have been so supportive of moving in this direction. It's going to happen. We'll see the signing tomorrow, and then we'll start, they're going to be going to the middle school next week.
On the 3rd.
To present this to our eighth graders, and then subsequently, it'll be presented to our current TM high school staff, students and staff. Mr. Alvarado, do you have anything to add on this?
So starting within the next couple of weeks, Mr. Reese will be, or has transferred over as a dean of instruction to the head of this, this program. So as part of that program, we were planning on meeting with every student one-on-one and laying out the next four years of their, of their career so they can finish out either the 42 credits they're associates or get close enough. All students will not qualify for the 42, and that's, and that's okay. You will have some students like our engineering students who are going to, we're going to tell them you're not taking college algebra because you're taking calculus. And calculus is the start of an engineering program. It's not college algebra. So it's going to hurt you to take college algebra. You'd be taking it for nothing. So there, we have identified four people on our staff who will meet with these students through intercession. through intercessions and throughout the day, one-on-one meetings. And then we'll set out the next four years for our freshmen. The juniors and seniors, the current juniors and seniors, or next year's juniors and seniors, will be given that same opportunity, depending on whether or not they've passed TSI or not. Coastal Bend College has different requirements for TSI than Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, but they're still able to get students nine college hours no matter what in either program, regardless if they pass the TSI or not. But we are definitely making strides now to have students pass TSI by the end of their sophomore year. And there will be, we had met with the, today we met with our campus group and they're super excited to have their kids do this. Yeah, site-based. And they're super excited to have their kids do this. They're, you know, we explained to them, you know, we were a little worried about them getting behind a police car and driving 100 miles an hour, because that's going to happen when they turn 18 as they're going through the law enforcement program. But it's part of their, part of their training. So, but it is, it's going to be great for kids, be great for parents, especially with the finances that are needed for college nowadays. And all of these courses transferred to any public school in Texas as they are shown. But once again, it all depends on whether or not their degree plan at their institution requires them to take that course or not. So, that's where the informed advising she was talking about. So, it's going to be very tailor-made. Mr. Van Mietry charged us with a kid who was showing a pig, a kid who was an athlete, and a kid who's in band for them to be able to take the full vote. So, we've spent hours, days trying to make that work. So, it all works in theory, we're just not going to make it in practice.
I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question.
I was going to say, I was going to bring it on out.
I have a question. You said this was going to be made available to all students?
All students.
Including ACC?
Including ACC.
And they're going to be transported from that campus to these?
So, we actually have one student who's starting cosmetology in the spring with Coastal Bend College. And that is one of the programs. So, they will be transported to Coastal Bend College for cosmetology.
Also, some of these kids that are ACC are parents. And sometimes they are allowed to bring their children to campus. Supposing you have a student that is, that fits that criteria, what about the child transporting on a bus 45 miles away?
We wouldn't be able to do that. Our bus, our busing was, is.
So, that student would not be able to take part in the program?
I think it would just be dependent upon the program. So, a lot of schools have online classes. So, if they're looking to do the core, that can definitely be online. The only thing that they would have to worry about is if they have to do like biology where there's a lab. That would require them to go to campus for the lab. And the lab is usually just one day a week and it's in the afternoon. But majority of the core is you can take online. If they want to do something like automotive, then that's something that would require childcare because that is them in a shop and there's no way they could provide childcare at the universities.
I have one more question. The, what is the, you may have already addressed this. What is the transportation time? Like, for instance, they leave the high school, they go to these campuses, and they're spending how much time there and how much time will it take? Is it a full day or?
It depends on the program.
Yes.
So, it's, the way we've designed their schedule is that we have kids going Monday, Wednesday, Friday, starting at eight. We do intend to push our time back for start of school next year to accommodate that change so they can get back here on time. So, they'll start at eight, they'll have a classroom eight to 8:50. And then from nine to 9:50, getting back on the bus to return so they can get here for fourth-period athletics. That way, they're, they're still able to play sports. If they're a band student who has practice in the morning, they go into the afternoon group. So, they'd have class from one to 1:50 and then two to 2:50. And then come back in time for the start of their after-school practice. So, all that stuff's built in by design. You do have some programs at Coastal Bend who are, they just attend all day Monday and then all day Wednesday. So, we've tailored a program for them to where they will make up that time that they lost on Monday and do Tuesdays and Thursdays and still be able to fulfill their course needs. It's a, it's a bunch of changing of schedules for those type of kids. But they've all been individualized and we've worked on every single one of them to where they work out.
Yeah, definitely.
I have one more question and then I'll let you ask. Do you have, did you get parent input into the building of this program? It's a great program, but.
I'd say very little, Janie.
There were no concerns as far as?
We've communicated, not a lot. Primarily because I've got a vision and I know, I've done this program for six years now and I know it'll change lives. And it's option, and it's optional.
It's a great program, but I'm just thinking about the potential for something in the future that might impact the program. That's my, that's my only.
So, we brought this up and to, with my parents, we've talked to them at site-based. They're all for it. We also had a senior meeting and junior meetings, we've gotten through those two. And they seem all very excited about doing free college. I mean, that's.
You visited with your department head.
Yes. And, you know, the reservations are stuff that we took into account and said, okay, how do we make this work?
Transportation and.
As we've, we've gone through the whole entire, it's a complete program that allows kids to be kids still and still do the things they want to do, along with getting college credit if they so choose.
Thank you for your answer.
So, I guess my, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I was just going to say, as adults and parents, of course, we do look at the dollar sign because we all know how expensive college is right now. But more than that, we need these kids to sit in these classrooms and figure out, is this for me? And it's all right if it's not for them and then you can start moving them towards a technology-based program or a certificate program, which I very much believe in. A college degree is wonderful, but at the same time, getting a career that way is wonderful. Everybody needs their own path. And to get them into the classrooms is going to help them make those decisions more easily and take a burden off the parents, so. Appreciate that, John.
So, I guess, kind of like, Janie, her last question kind of brought up this one that I'm going to bring first. What does that do to our insurance on coverage of, you know, I know we have a surge in insurance like when an athlete goes out of town or a field trip even, you know. Does this fall into the cover, like, we would still be responsible for the kids when they're absent? But at least on the road, I mean, I guess when they get to the university.
The parents will sign an agreement, we'll have a handbook, we'll have a separate handbook. And they will be told upfront, we do not have the amount of oversight and supervision of these kids on a college campus as what we have at Tulsa Midway High School. That's one of the reasons we're not allowing freshmen and sophomores to participate and go to the university.
Right. Okay, when, like I said, that part came up when she mentioned the parent input. You know, and I got concerned about that right away. But I do, I, one, first and foremost, I, I mean, man, I'll tell you what, I mean, I was really taken by this. I think everybody I've talked to, I'm telling them the great things we've done, I mean, from just getting away from just the basic dual-credit. So, I mean, I'm glad you guys have taken a lot of time to study into this. And I'm glad that you've taken in, you know, letting them still be high school students, obviously. Because first and foremost, you know, they got four years of B-Wars left, you know, when they hit the high school level. But taking this back some, how do you prepare a student? And I'm going to pick on Ms. Yalovas here, only because she's an engineer. And this would have been something that would have caught your eye tremendously and I saw the smile on your face when you saw that. But to get her ready for something like this, you would catch them in sixth grade?
No.
Eighth grade, around there, I mean.
Our program is still built upon those students completing high school credit courses at middle school. That's the foundation of it all. That way, they can make room in their schedule, their freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year so that they can take as many courses as they want. From, you know, her, an engineering standpoint, you know, we have to talk to the kid about what type of engineer they want to be first. And there's several different varieties that we can go through. And then, give that informed advising, if they're going to be a chemical engineer, well, then we might want to make sure that they take the chemistry version at Tamuk first as opposed to the geology. We're not just, we're offering a variety of sciences that they can pick from, but we want to tailor it to what she might need based on her career choice. So, it's not just everybody gets geology because that's a three-hour science and we know you need six to go. No, we're going to make that commitment to the kids to talk to them individually and tell them like, okay, this is kind of what we're doing, this is where you need to be by the time you graduate. You know, engineering's tough, it's the toughest one that we have to plan for because every single college/university has a different jumping off point for an engineer. So, although we can offer college algebra to a kid, that college algebra is only the start of an engine program at A&amp;M Kingsville. Because at College Station, it's calculus. So, there's no need to take that course. So, instead, what we've done is we've had one of our teachers teach calculus, an honors calculus course on our campus. So, they'll stay on campus, not take college algebra, but rather take an honors calculus class with us. She's a Delmar professor as well, so she'll teach our kids so when they go to College Station and take calculus for that first time, they'll be prepared. The calculus at A&amp;M Kingsville does not transfer. It's not one of those that transfers directly over to A&amp;M, they won't take it.
I mean, I'm going to just, I've got one more question because I know, I know everybody else has one. The last part was on the, on the, I call it windshield, on the distance. The distance between the local A&amp;M system and the one in Kingsville. Was it measured on a differential or, I mean, how did we pick Kingsville? How did Kingsville come about? Was it just an agreement?
They really wanted this.
Okay. No, no, and that's fine because I know that the university here has the islands, I mean, why?
And this is just phase one. What you'll see down the road is a partnership with them because they have some programs that Kingsville doesn't have that our students will be interested in. But to go back and expand on what, how are we preparing? We're going to start preparing them in primary. And we're going to, we're going to develop programs there such as Avid, such as Project Lead the Way, Flight. You'll see in the coming year or two, a dual-language program opening up down there for.
So, you'll be bringing back Avid, is what you're saying?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
Definitely.
Because we had that when my oldest was, I think.
Did you like him?
Well, I had to beg for her to get in because at that time you had to, your income had to be at a certain level and you had to, like, you had like this mile-long list of things you had to be on before.
Now, we're going to be inclusive as we possibly can.
So, it wasn't, it was kind of one of those things that wasn't open to everyone?
We had that discussion this morning about bringing that back and the opportunities that it will. But we have to make sure that at the primary and intermediate and middle school campuses, that they develop the strong prerequisite foundational skills to take full advantage of these programs. Because what, what our goal is, and I know you support this, is to train all students to have as many options where they want to go to an Ivy League competitive school, where they want to go to a local community college. They'll have those skills and opportunities available to them.
That's very important, very important.
The CTE. Oh, I'm sorry. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but.
You notice that she's only doing it one question at a time, we all had three.
No, I've done, this is all I have. The CTE program that y'all are offering at the middle school during intercession is this?
The CTE camp.
Yes, so does this go with this?
No, so.
That's different.
Well, it does. So, the CTE Pathway Camp is actually for, to help students get exposed to all the programs of study that we have at the high school. We do have Coastal Bend coming to represent their programs like cosmetology because it's, it is a very hard program. For cosmetology, they have to finish all of their high school requirements by the end of their junior year. Because when they go to Coastal Bend for cosmetology, it is eight to five, Monday through Wednesday, for a full year. And, but they get it done. I mean, they get that operator certification and they can go out and be their own company. You know, which is what we want.
The other thing it does is if CTE's not for them, we still have a program for general studies for a kid who's on that traditional college track. So, maybe they can see, I've been exposed to all this stuff that's going on and none of this really appeals to me. I want to be a theater major when I'm, or I want to be in the band and I want to be a band director. Well, then, we still included those kids for general studies. So that when they graduate, they still graduate with 42 hours and they can just start their music or their theater right then and there as a junior almost in college.
I just, I think it's awesome and people need to know about that going on at the middle school during intercession. And it's being shared and a lot of information is going out. But to let them know all these different things that are available to them is huge at that middle school level, especially at the end of their eighth-grade year when they have to make that decision, so.
Well, it's next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's next week, that's why I'm bringing it up.
And it's going to be the week after.
When we come back from intercession. So far, we have eight students. But we've been sending it out on Messenger every afternoon.
Yeah. I wish, I'm glad that y'all are incorporating that. That's, that's going to be a huge benefit for those kids, is what I'm saying. And I just want to make sure that people know that that's available for their kids during intercession because the kids are going to find out a whole lot of information.
Exactly.
I don't know, Steven's scared to raise his hand now.
Janie asked my question about the ACC students. And I have a question, do we, I'm excited about this partnership that's going to be signed tomorrow. But what is our partnership with Delmar? Have we dissolved that partnership? Because I believe they offer free tuition, free transportation.
No, it's not free. And we, we have our medical program with them.
We have our health science program with them right now. So, that's where we get the EKG and blood pressure students for right now.
But the Delmar programs at our school, we're not going to their campus.
That's correct.
That's a difference between this program and the other program.
And also, I think ACC's interested in the pipeline and the, what's the new one that they've presented to us?
Right now, we don't have a whole lot of interest in the pipeline program. But I do know that we send students for P-Tech. We send one student for P-Tech right now, who's actually going to Delmar campus. And at the high school, we're sending two students right now for heavy equipment.
Do you mind if I ask Ms. McLaren?
You can ask her anything you want.
Can you explain the program that I attended on your campus at the end of the last six weeks? Delmar presented with the nine-year certificate?
We had a meeting, we had a career day where we called in Delmar and I believe you and Mrs. Angianna were both there. And what we did was, we had them come and talk about all of the certification programs that they had available that our students might be interested in. And I really, I'm not sure in this forum is the correct time to be talking about our kids, but it's, it's very difficult for us to imagine our kids partaking in a lot of this when they're reading on a second and third grade level. I mean, it's, it's very difficult for them. The certification programs were what they came to present. And so, we're looking at a way for our students to get a certificate and to be able to go out and, and provide for their families. These are kids that are not, they're, they're very good in working with their hands. They're excellent at showing up every day. They're very good in, in figuring something that they can be a productive member of society. But our kids can't, the majority, let me put it this way. The majority of our kids are not college material. They are not going to be able to do the dual-credit. And, and I'm just saying that because it's a reality. Their attendance has not been good throughout the time. You can go back through their records to kindergarten and first grade. They were rarely ever in school. They, they have had issues with learning. The trauma that goes on in their lives on a daily basis, we were just looking today. I bet we probably have a good third of our students who are, are children from parents that are incarcerated or have been incarcerated. So, we were looking more, and that's the program we had Delmar do with us, at certificates that would provide for them. We were looking at that carpentry program. We were looking at programs that would provide them with enough and with a certificate that they could go out and get a decent job and could be a productive member of society. Yes, we're looking at one girl possibly, still looking at the possibility for her to go to Coastal Bend for cosmetology. Again, the issue is, I don't know if she's going to have completed all of her high school credits. And by all means, all of our kids have either never passed any of their STAR tests or very few. And so, our time is being spent. spent trying to get that done because our job is to make sure first and foremost that they get a high school diploma. And anything else is above and beyond. And, you know, just getting these kids through STAR, and, and like I said, some of them have five tests they have to pass. Just getting through that is, it's an everyday struggle.
What, what I like is Ms. Garza has become a new resource for ACC where she works collaboratively with their administration. And there's no program that we will offer to Tulsa Midway High School traditional students that we don't give them an opportunity to look at as well.
That, that would be my, like you said, it's all the students, every one of them, no matter where. That's, that's the main thing that, excuse me, I like about it, that you're looking at all the students and talking to them and giving them an opportunity of a lifetime.
I think the other thing we have to understand is that although Coastal Bend College is new, they are more flexible with what we need it to be than Delmar has been in the past. So as we, we are shifting some programs that way, but it's because they're willing to work with us a little bit more than Delmar has been in the past.
I'm gonna, if--
No, I'm just gonna say something's happened with our partnership with Delmar in the past. I don't, I'm not sure, but we don't have the same relationship, it seems.
I'd say that's fair. Steven, did you have--
Yes, I was gonna do that too.
Answering all kinds of great questions I had, so go ahead.
Okay. Now, this is taking a line from previous, of previous superintendent. This is back in the old days, in the dinosaur days. But when I was-- I know, right? I actually quoted her. That's amazing. And on TV. When I was in Kingsville, I think Coastal Bend had just changed the name. And Kingsville High School had a little offside, kind of like we have up here by Carolina, like a little campus school, like near a mall area. It's still there. So are they going to Beville or they're going to Kingsville and you're just gonna take one bus, one direction?
If they need, they could be going to, most kids will go to Beville. Some kids will go to Alice, some kids will go to Kingsville. It'll be either one of those three depending on what they're trying to--
Yeah, because it's kind of like the way Delmar has satellite stations.
Yes, it's the same--
It's a Coastal Bend, when they changed the name to Coastal Bend--
Yes.
They put these satellite stations out. So I just wanted to make sure they were, you know, you know, are we sending more than one bus? Is it, is that gonna interfere with the morning route for the, you know, for the kids, you know?
We're providing, we have one of our coaches as volunteer to drive the bus, who's already got there.
Fortunately, at every meeting.
Okay, I was gonna say--
Because if he doesn't, if he doesn't sign off on, we can't do it.
Then I'm gonna say, you promised me step one and you delivered, sir. Thank you very much.
Not yet.
Well, yeah, but you've got to go. You know exactly what I'm talking about. So I wanna thank you for getting on that quickly. Thank you.
Great job, y'all.
Because you brought a lot of those ideas from other places.
They're, they're not gonna admit it, but they're already taking, doing Zooms with the big school district in this area, looking at, you know, how they can duplicate some of the things that they've put together. They're a really strong team right here, Tulsa Midway High School. Really strong team.
Congratulations to y'all.
Mr. Alvarado, I have a question for you. Can you elaborate? This is a great program. Giving our kids these kinds of opportunities is way more than when I was on staff, I could have already imagined this happening. But when, what, can you elaborate a little bit on the disconnect between Delmar and TM? I mean, you don't have to go into detail, but, you know, I, we had a great program. We had a great relationship with Delmar. So can you, can you elaborate on the disconnect?
Well, let me, let me say this. There's some fences that need to be mended from meetings and conversations that were held last year and previous years. What Dr. Eskamia and myself are doing is, we've already had one breakfast. We're gonna have others. I have always had partnerships with Delmar and I'll continue to have partnerships with Delmar. They're a strong South Texas community college that we can take advantage of. Is that gonna happen overnight? Probably not. But I think we share the same goals.
Thank you. I was just curious because, I mean, I've been working through with Delmar and we had a great relationship and we did a lot with them. And I was just curious because I don't know what the disconnect, where the disconnect happened. And, because they, they were, they were awesome with our kids as well.
They have one of the best nursing programs for--
Well, you can get your bachelor's degree through Delmar now. One of the few community colleges that you can do that with.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you. And it's, we appreciate all the, I know this was quite an effort on everyone's part that was involved. And I know that it took a lot of time, but it looks like y'all have got a good start--
How many of you are planning on going to Kingsville Delmar to be with us? Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you. Next item is discussing the center out-of-state trip request by TMH, TMHIS ROTC Paris Island, June 4th through the 9th, 2023. Then there's one for speech and debate as well, for February the 7th through the 24th. The short board policy, FNG Local.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm gonna let Mr. Alvarado take this item and talk about the two unbelievable opportunities for our students.
Mr. Harmon starts.
Oh, thank you, sir. Good afternoon, or good evening, guys. I'm Joe Harmon, by the way. I know our superintendent's new to us, but I think I've met the rest of y'all. We're trying to do it again this year. And to piggyback on what Ms. Garza was saying and Mr. McLaren back there, my kids generally are not college kids. They're, they're not. They are smart. They want to do good. They do good for me. Somebody's gotta show them where to go. And that's what this trip is about. Last year, we took it. We visited seven different military bases and all the opportunities that exist at those military bases. From joining the military to contract workers that exist on every military base now. Mr. Eric Taylor back here, he's one of my students. He did the pledges for us. He went with us last year. I took him to a place in Jacksonville, Florida where they, they rebuild all those orange and white airplanes that are flying around here. Every one of them goes to Jacksonville. They tear them down, they tear them apart and rebuild them. And they got to see all that. They got to see the craftsmen working. Not the military people, but the craftsmen that exist, that the military needs. These guys aren't gonna join the military for the most part. I generally get one to two to three per year that join the military. But the rest of them have to work. So that's my goal, is to show them something that exists out there that they can do as a non-military person. And a craftsman is a perfect opportunity. Eric got to do what they call the virtual paint booth last year. I think I put it on our Facebook page, but they make them wear VR goggles and paint an airplane virtually. So they got to practice that. That's science and technology. That's, that's an opening for these guys if they want to go that far. Electrical, hydraulics, mechanical, motors, engine, everything is at this facility. They got to see it all. If they want to join the military, perfect opportunity to see all the different services. We went to an army base, two navy bases, a submarine base, a marine corps base. It was just a great trip. It was a great trip. And I think the kids enjoyed it. He can stand up and tell you if he didn't enjoy it. I think you enjoyed it, right?
That's a fresh review.
Yeah. So we're planning to go again with about 40 kids. That's our normal load is about 40 kids. It's a long trip over, a long trip back. But what they get out of it, I think, is immeasurable. Because like my ACC people back here, most of my kids aren't gonna go to college. They're simply not. I applaud Mr. Alvarado and Ms. Garza for starting this program. I hope it works. I'll support it in every single way I can. But the fact is, the kids I have, 1% go to college. So of all the kids I've ever had in this program, thousands of them, 1% to 2% go to college. The rest of them have to work. The rest of them gotta do something. So that's my goal, to take them on this trip, to show them what else is out there if they just try. Just give it a shot. And some do and some don't. But this trip is outstanding opportunity for me to show them all this stuff. It's a long trip. It's a week long, but they get a lot out of it, I think. Eric, did you have anything you wanted to put out? Is it worth going?
Yes, sir.
He's shy, but he's, he's one of my go-to guys over there. He's got a sister in the program now. His little sister's a ninth grader in my program now.
He looks like a go-to guy.
He is. He takes care of my supply room for me. And that's a big job. There's a lot of stuff in our supply room. So he helps me take care of the unit. But it is an opportunity for these kids to get out of Corpus Christi, get out of Texas, and go see, be scared to see another part of the country they've never seen before and experience it. And it's, it's life-changing for a lot of them. 100% of the kids I've had join the military in all the years I've been doing this, 100% have taken this trip. And it exposes them to things that they can't even imagine exist out there. Because most of them have never been out of Corpus. They've never been out of Texas. So it gets them out, shows them things. And, and we're up early, 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning. We work hard all day. And then we keep going for another day after that. So we've got a little ceremony for Mr. Landin coming up on Veterans Day in November over at our ROTC room. It, he loved this program as, as I don't have to tell y'all. He, he did. Because the kids get a lot out of it. They, they really do. We're not the biggest club on campus. We're not the smartest club on campus. But what we do for the kids, what we try to instill in them is, is just knowledge. How to be a good person. Today, their assignment was, write a quote down from a leader and explain how that quote will influence people you're trying to influence. Well, that's hard for some of these kids. They've never been in charge of anything. So we bring it out of them. We push them to be better people. We do current events. We look at North Korea, what's happening in North Korea right now. We talk about missile defense at the United States. How do we stop a missile? These kids don't know. Now they do. We, we talk about a variety of things that will affect their lives as they get older. And just to give them some good knowledge. That's what we do.
They did something. Our boys waited, waited for you to bring this presentation because it gives the kids such an opportunity.
It does. The kids get out of it what they put into it, always. We don't get every kid volunteer for everything we do. We just don't. On the 22nd of November, during our Thanksgiving break, I've got, I'm taking them to NASA up in Houston. Hold two busloads of them up there so they can touch a piece of Mars that they do up there. They can see the space shuttle. They can, they can see the Saturn V rockets and the technology that goes into that sort of stuff. I just try to give them opportunities because sometimes they're not gonna be going to college classes. Again, Ms. Garza is wonderful. I love her to death. And I wish them the success with that program. But my kids generally don't go to college. So I gotta have them do something else.
And that's okay. And you're exposing them to things that they can do. And that's what's important.
Exactly. It is important. Because every kid can't do calculus.
Everybody has a job. They're gifted to do something. It's not always to go to college. They have to have the tools and you're, you're providing that for them.
And Ms. McLaren and I, we talk frequently about our kids. And some of our kids are the same kids sometimes. But that's our goal, is to get them out of high school with something in their back pocket they can do. 10 minutes before I came over here, I got an email pop-up from a kid who graduated three years ago from this school, from Tulsa Midway. He's fed up with working in a warehouse. He's tired of trying to make ends meet and he wants to join the Army. Can I help him? Absolutely. Help. Come on over tomorrow. We'll figure it out. Saturday, I was at Walmart over here in Greenwood and ran into a kid who graduated two years ago. He's just been bouncing around, living at home, not doing anything. We talked a little bit and I've got him set up with the Army for next week with the recruiter. So that's what we do. We don't give up on, years later, they can come to me. They always do. And I help them out the best I can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So please approve it. Please approve it.
Do you want to discuss speech and debate?
Ms. Delavina's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see--
No, it's okay.
She was here.
Hi, for those who don't know, my name's Cassie Delavina. I am the speech and debate coach. I am working to take my top 10 kids to a Harvard tournament in February. It is a national tournament. They participate in it. So all year, we go to these local tournaments. We'll go to San Antonio. We've gone to Austin. And a lot of them are here. So they get to compete on that local level with the people that they've connected with, they know. And then at the end of the year, we do what we call a nationals, where they go compete against everyone in the nation. Where we kind of get stuck because we're competing against people we've never seen and talent that we've never seen. And so going to a Harvard tournament helps them get that interaction, helps them see what's out there. What are we preparing for? What are we looking for? And it helps them create networks and friends. And so it's a really great opportunity. This would be the first year that I'm taking them. They have gone in the past. So it would be me and two chaperones, I believe, that I'm taking 10 to 11 kids. We would fly out there. And it's gonna be funded through the kids. So they will be doing fundraising on their own in order to get us there and get us back. We would be gone maybe this Thursday to Monday.
So I have to share this with you. We went to the play Saturday night--
Yes.
And were mingling with the kids afterwards. And one of the actors wanted me to know that he was the best speech and debate person at Tulsa Midway High School and quite possibly the state.
Okay. Well, he's not for that.
They do start them very young.
I was so, I was so impressed. I told him I wasn't gonna get in an argument with him or anything like that. But I mean, they're so proud of the program.
They are. My kids are so proud. They work so hard every day. And they juggle it on top of athletics, on top of theater, on top of honors courses and UT courses. And they still show up every day for me.
And they're mentoring the middle school students on intercessions, the other kids that are in speech and debate. And that's very impressive.
Yes. It is a good program there in and of itself. Absolutely wonderful. Yes.
No questions?
Any other questions? Wonderful opportunity for our students. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the out-of-state field trip request for Tulsa Midway High School ROTC Paris Island, June 4th through 9th, 2023. Tulsa Midway High School speech and debate at Harvard University, Cambridge, Massachusetts, February 17th to 21st, 2023, pursuant to board policy, FNG Local, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Maitre. I'll make that recommendation--
I'll second that.
Janie, seconds. Any other comments or questions? Great programs. Commander, keep it up. Speech and debate, keep it up. Y'all been doing a good job. I see all those remarkable people out there working on everything. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Are those in favor? So the post motion carries six here. Thank you very much. Discussing consider approval of district improvement plan and campus improvement plans.
Mr. President, members of the board, as you know, this is an annual requirement as well that takes a significant amount of collaboration between Dr. White and our campus principals and our district site-based and campus site-based committees. And it culminates with this. So without further ado, Dr. White.
So good evening, everyone. I'm from the audience. So today, I've, I've got a couple of presentations. But first and foremost, I'm gonna start off with the district and campus improvement plan overview, which is going to include the performance objectives, which you will also find in its entirety within the plans that are within the board book. But this is just a snapshot overview of everything that you'll find within each of the campus and the district plans. So in following requirements from Title I, but also just requirements overall for creating improvement plans according to BQ, legal, and local, there are two key areas where we need to focus. One is identifying our needs and then developing-- One is identifying our needs and then developing our goals, our objectives, our strategies. And so from the district, we do it from the need standpoint, which helps create the framework for the campuses to work within, so that they can create their goals and objectives, which of course align back to the overarching goals of the district and the goals of the school board. And so here is kind of what we have developed through our district site-based planning, as well as our comprehensive needs assessment. The CNA or the comprehensive needs assessment really drives the planning process. It focuses us through several different lenses, so that we're analyzing data, and we're looking at student groups, and we're also looking at community needs. And so from the CNA that was performed in school year '21, '22, these were the identified needs for the district for school year '22, '23. We have five categories: teaching, learning, social and emotional, parent engagement, and health safety. And so when we look at teaching, and again, I'm not going to read the slides. You both are going to talk to you as I'm reading them, is that teaching is looking, being looked at through three different lenses: curriculum, instruction, and assessment. With the arrival of Mr. Van Maitre, we were able to establish for the first time the curriculum and instruction department to allow us as a team to truly focus on those bullet points in that column. And so you'll see there the high-quality instructional materials, looking at our curriculum and what our teachers are using and their planning in order to deliver that high-quality instruction. And so currently, part of the district is going through a curriculum audit to determine the efficacy and the quality of our curriculum and whether or not changes or updates are needed. Looking at our assessments, understanding that with STAR 2.0 being given for the first time this school year, there is a need to reevaluate our local assessments to understand whether or not they are aligned and are providing the rigor at the level to prepare our students to be ready for this new STAR 2.0 exam. And one of the last things that we are looking at is how can we continue to use our data to inform our decision-making, and so that we are truly providing equitable opportunities for all of our students. It's kind of a bit of a theme this evening, is just, again, equity and opportunity. Being data-driven allows us to achieve those goals. With learning, that comes after understanding the curriculum that we are going to use. So again, looking at the learning aspect, two key things there is student growth and closing gaps. Obviously, we've talked before about math and literacy being the two key focus areas, but certainly math is our top priority right now. Through intercession planning, through Saturday school, through our before and after-school opportunities, each of the campuses has a very strategic plan that they're laying out this school year to not only go after HB4545 and those students who are needing those requirements, but just in terms of targeting bubble students and trying to increase student growth for all students, and of course, at their performance level when it comes to STAR. When we look at social and emotional, we're really looking at wraparound services. And when I say wraparound services, you probably have a couple ideas of what that might mean, but in terms of whole-child development and making sure that we are focused on not just the academic performance of students, but also the emotional, the social, the behavioral, the mental. There's a lot to a student. And so this category really helps us create a laser focus on making sure that we're not just staying all in the performance aspect of a student's career, but also what makes them them. Parent engagement, I will say that's going to be not a new focus, but definitely more of a concerted focus this year. Even hearing tonight, some questions about what are we doing more to include the community? What are we doing more to engage parents, whether from the school district standpoint or just overall as part of this community? Parent engagement is huge. It's also huge, because now that we've gone school, district-wide Title I status, it's also a requirement. And so as we are looking to increase our opportunities, our Title I status requires us to do so. And so what better time now to kind of meet both at where we're at and to start doing some more things with our parents when it comes to surveys and collecting feedback during multiple points of the school year, building parent capacity. When we get into the campus plans in a second, one of the themes you'll realize is that we are being very intentional about our meetings and trying to have events and activities for our parents that are specific to them and their needs and their understanding, so that as we talk about Warpath Academy, as we talk about these new initiatives, they understand, and they have the capacity to ask those questions to where if they don't know something, they can ask the right questions and we can give them that information. And so with health safety, obviously, that's where it begins and always ends. This year in particular, with some of the things that happened before the school year started, there has been a concerted effort to refocus our eyes and ears on just what we're doing at the campus level, as well as the district level, so that, again, supervision's 100% 24/7 all times. Our EOPs and procedural guidelines are up to date, and we're utilizing the latest technologies in order to not only maintain that documentation, but in order to streamline those expectations from the district to the campus. And then again, just being very clear about the expectations. Mr. Van Maitre's really set the tone with that this year through Mr. Hernandez and the committee that he oversees. And so we're just really, really excited about that, because knowing that we have safety and security on point, that again allows us to keep the focus on while we're here, which is helping each student learn. And so starting with primary, again, you'll see a lot of these needs repeated, just as the framework from the district moving down to the campus level. At the primary level, there's been a huge focus on research-based professional development. Ms. Dalva's done a really good job of setting up for her campus strategic PD that focuses on early literacy and math. So when we talk about learning and focusing in that area, the engagement strategies that she's incorporating on her campus are part of an overall series of professional development, where all teachers are expected to be engaging with their students, not just in one mode, but in multiple modes. And so as the campus goes through that PD series this year, we should have some really good evaluation and some good data to look at at the end of the year to determine if that PD has been worth it or not. Moving into social and emotional, one thing in particular at the primary campus has been the RTI and the MTSS model. This is the model where we tier our students into three categories based on the data and their need. And so that helps create a focus for our staff in order to determine what those needs need to be for those students, in order to then strategically schedule groups and things of that nature in order to deliver to those students the things that they still need, going back to closing those gaps that we talked about before. Parent engagement, again, same thing from the district level down. We're really looking to increase those opportunities in order to not only provide more opportunities, but to also capture a different set of parents that perhaps maybe we haven't been able to capture in the past. And then health safety, again, just making sure that from when the bell rings to when the bell rings at the end, when the bell starts the day, when the bell ends the day, and everything in between, that all staff know the expectations on her campus. And some of the strategies I've already said, but again, really working through the time that we have with our students, trying to bring more purpose to intercessions through STEM and some other enrichment initiatives. Looking at the learning opportunities, really doing a good job this year from the primary all the way up until the high school and ACC, really monitoring student attendance and making sure that if students are not in session, that we are following our truancy procedures and just being more informed based on the data that we've been able to generate from e-school, which is in a better place now to provide us that data, so that we can be more on the intervention side when it comes to attendance for students. Again, social and emotional learning, Ms. Dalva has really led the charge for the district when it comes to this, in terms of her PACS initiative and having that expectation set last year. So again, when we talk social and emotional, that might sound a little new at the high school, but at the primary campus, that's nothing new. They know exactly what that is, and they can even talk about it in terms of what that looks like on their campus, but in their classroom too. Again, when it comes to parent engagement, some of the things that we've been able to add this year have been parent liaisons, that has been able to be done by looking at our Title I funds and doing some different things there in order to provide the personnel to help support our parent engagement initiatives. And another thing too with the health safety, which I find is really awesome, is the Little Warrior Academy, to again, to support teachers and challenging students through another group, where perhaps maybe without that group, we weren't capturing those students before. Moving on to the intermediate, again, really focusing hard on this curriculum instruction and assessment, knowing that the intermediate school, with the assistance from the primary, is our A-campus, wanting intermediate to stay at an A-campus. And so as we all know, once you get on top, it's hard to stay there. So again, not being content with the things that we already do, but trying to add more and to expand on the things that are working. And so with that being said, really again, looking at our MTSS model. I would say of everybody in the district, the intermediate campus is leading the charge in that regard, and also helping us as a district set a district-wide expectation for how we go about intervening when students don't get something, or there's a disconnect or a gap of some kinds. And again, MTSS, with its three tiers, allows us to group students accordingly and for us to have a strategy in terms of pairing up a teacher with a group of students where teacher skill set, student skill set matches, and we can get the best benefit from that strategy. Again, social and emotional supports. One cool thing that intermediate's doing is the digital citizenship and bringing more social media awareness to their students. Again, when we think of digital citizenship and social media awareness, we tend to think middle school and high school. But again, another theme tonight, not wanting to just leave it there, but trying to push it down and create a K through 12 expectation, where we're not waiting until they get to middle school and then we intervene, but really starting at the earliest years to have that greatest impact. Again, parent engagement, same thing, trying to create more flexible meeting dates and times, also incorporating more translation services, since that's been an identified need on that campus. And then again, one more time, 100% supervision and having a no opt-out approach to where safety and security is all of our responsibilities. And so principals having that expectation for their staff gives us a level of reassurance that our students truly are safe at school. And again, here are some of the strategies. Again, really focusing on the local assessments, making sure that our data system, DMAC, we are taking full advantage of that. Ms. Trevino has some excellent instructional facilitators on her campus, some of the veterans in the district who again are leading that charge and really helping set that standard for the district. At the learning level, again, really incorporating those STAR 2.0 expectations into the instruction, trying to move our students more to the one-on-one devices. As we all know, STAR 2.0 will be assessed fully online, and so what better way to help our students get ready than to, again, just because we're at COVID, doesn't mean technology went away, still going to and looking at technology as another way to help our students get prepared, but also in terms of the 21st century learning that she expects to happen on campus. And so with social and emotional learning, again, really looking at it from a culture standpoint and making sure that all staff members understand their role in that. Parent engagement, same thing. We have watchdogs. We have the parent facilitator, the parent liaison that the primary has, and then just really working through the PTA partnership that she already has, making that much stronger this year. And then finally, with health safety, again, another theme being proactive in the planning. She's taken a proactive approach with her campus. I know at one point or another, we've heard about those needs at that campus, but again, not allowing those to be barriers, but just as an opportunity to put another plan in place to where we can go around that, until we're able to find another way to address those needs. At the middle school, again, we're doing some really, really great things, as you all know. We went from a C-campus to a B-campus in one year's time. So again, we don't want to just stop there. We want to continue the momentum that we've been able to pick up with that B-rating. And so again, the themes of curriculum instruction assessment, focusing specifically with her math, and trying to incorporate more high-yield teaching strategies. On the next slide, you'll see that she has contracted a service with a math consultant that is helping her and her IFS and math department really, really bring those high-yield teaching strategies to her students. Again, one thing that you might see new on this slide for social and emotional is clinical services, and really trying to expand an opportunity for students who are suffering from grief or from trauma, or who are still recovering from some of the COVID episodes of the past couple of years. That if that is the case, then we are able to identify those students either through communities and schools, or at the high school where we have our social worker who also supports 6 through 12 students. Parent engagement, again, a big, big, big piece for this campus, and focusing specifically on the transitional grades, coming from fifth to sixth and from eighth to ninth. I know we heard from Ms. Garza tonight about what we are going to begin doing with the eighth-grade students when it comes to the Warpath Academy. But again, in addition to that information, just trying to bring more awareness to our expectations as students transition from campus to campus, and really trying to drive those key points home at the middle school. And again, health safety, understanding that, you know, between the physical safety of the campus and our students, but also some of the more indirect or latent effects of safety when it comes to bullying, when it comes to suicide prevention, when it comes to just the overall mental health awareness piece. One thing that we've been able to add this year, and working with the counselors as well, is an official bullying handbook for the district. And so that has been a big, big help in terms of just structuring the expectation as far as how to start from the beginning with, I guess, an incident, and then working all the way through the investigation to your findings, so that again, equitable processes, equitable procedures, and just also helping some of our new assistant principals and administrators become aware of those expectations, and that handbook has helped with that. And so again, not to repeat what I just said, but just a few other key items. Kagan training has been huge for middle and high school. Kagan is an engagement strategy or philosophy where teachers are very interactive. They set the expectation where the learning environment is based on student learning modalities and adjusting the teaching to accommodate student learning modalities. More often than not, our students are more apt to be engaged when it comes to being in a kinesthetic learning mode. And so when we think kinesthetics, we think movement, we think tactile, we think, you know, hands-on. Middle school through the Kagan structures has begun incorporating that. Also with Dr. Yandel, again, that is the math consultant that is also helping with the high-yield teaching strategies. Social and emotional, we are continuing our partnership with Purple Door. If you all can recall last year, at some of the SHAC meetings, Purple Door came and presented, and their focus has been on stop the hate, stop the violence. And so just being able to identify some of our girl, female groups at the middle school for some of those reasons I just mentioned, Purple Door has helped in supporting those girls and their needs. And again, parent engagement, what a great opportunity middle school had this year to bring in communities and schools, thanks to Mr. Van Maitre and his vision for what that looks like for social and emotional support. That's been a huge, huge plus at our campus. And then health safety, again, working through suicide prevention, working through some of the social media pieces, working through bullying, and not just being in response to just some of those things that happen, but being proactive in helping our students become more educated, and of course, through more of our Title I initiatives, having some more parent nights where we make more of a focus on those items. Up to high school, looking at some of their needs. Again, some of this is repeating, because we're following some of the same frameworks, but again, looking at more rigorous assessments, looking at increasing the level of relevance that the instructional, that the instruction is being delivered, and making sure that what we are teaching actually matches our students' level of interest, and if it doesn't, having something in place that does. Also too, looking at the college and career readiness assessment preparation. I know we already talked a little bit about making TSI more of a focus this year, but again, not just making it more of a focus, but drilling it down to the individual student level to understand exactly who needs what and how to go about delivering that in, I won't say a short timeframe... won't say a short timeframe, but knowing the needs now and knowing that TSI is not something you just study in one night and become an expert in the next day. Having a bit of a short-term, but also a long-term plan for how to go about making sure that we move beyond just talking about STAR and some of the state assessments, but really talking about that post-secondary readiness standard, which if you are successful in TSI, that's the indicator that lets you know that yes, you are post-secondary ready for any sort of opportunity that exists beyond high school. Okay? Looking at the next three pieces kind of in its entirety, we talk a lot about college and career readiness, but we don't talk as much about being life-ready. We talk about college-ready, career-ready, military-ready. Sometimes we talk about future-ready, but what does it really mean to be life-ready? Right? What is the definition of that? If we could define it, what will we use to really kind of capture that? Not just in terms of an overall definition, but what that actually looks like here in the TM community. And so this year, again, through our initiatives to better engage our parents and our community, that is going to be something that we try to create a definition for so that when we do talk about Work Path Academy, when we do talk about ACC and her students and just everybody's needs in their entirety, how are we making sure that all students are either coming to us or leaving us that with that life readiness to where we know when they leave, maybe they don't have the exact skills to be, you know, in that career readiness aspect, but they've got the sense and the wherewithal to make good solid decisions to where when they are ready, they will be ready and they'll be able to take advantage of that opportunity when it comes. I've already said a lot of these strategies already as I just talked, but just to kind of give everybody a bird's eye view of what's happening at the high school. Obviously, I feel like high school strategies right now could be about 10 pages long with just all the great things that we are doing, but just again, to try to capture everything here. Again, being more intentional with our curriculum and instruction, utilizing the data that we get from our assessments to be more informed in our practices. Again, really trying to work through our wraparound services by better utilizing our counselors, our social workers, and our nurses. Again, offering flexible meeting times for our parents, whether it's in the morning or the afternoon, during the school day, during the school night, or even on the weekends. Again, just trying to create a calendar that works for everybody. And then again, just making sure that with our health safety initiatives, as we look at our plans and audit what we are doing, that we are being honest and, and again, being okay with knowing that we still have some work to do as we all do with safety. It can never, it's never perfect, but understanding that that is also a continuous improvement measure. Having that approach has been something that the high school has incorporated this year, again, through their site base and just some of their other initiatives that they've got going on on campus. And finally, ACC, talking more about ACC's intentionality with its instruction, its programs, and trying to again, address some of the unique needs at that campus. As we've heard tonight with Ms. McLaren, her needs are extreme and acute, meaning that we have to not just be, we can't just give them a program or expect them to just be successful by saying, here you go, here's something we're going to put you in. But again, making sure that the right program with the right teacher, with the right situation, and having that opportunity on her campus with the setting that she's in allows her to do that. And this year in particular, looking even beyond some of the programs that she's offered in the past, but going beyond that to look further, looking at outside districts like Leander to understand what it is that they're doing with their special population students to see if that's something that we can begin incorporating here at ACC. And I'm talking specifically about reading comprehension and just how do you teach a high school student who is at a second or third grade reading level, knowing that we don't really have teachers that exist that teach that way? Because the teachers that teach the second and third grade reading, well, they're at second and third grade teaching reading. It's really difficult to find the right teacher who understands how to deliver those types of skills at that level to students who are not at that age. And so I commend Ms. McLaren this year for really trying to put a plan in place in order to be able to address those needs. And again, ACC really does lead the district when it comes to some of the social emotional supports, in particular with grief and trauma. I know Ms. McLaren's in a multi-year plan for her campus as far as not just training her staff, but also making sure that as students are recovering credits or accelerating in their learning, that they're getting those wraparound service supports through the trauma and grief support that she's doing currently. Also, looking at parent engagement and health safety, again, making sure that each parent is understanding of what they can do to support their child while at ACC. And also too, making sure that on her campus, that there is a concerted focus on prevention strategies, whether it's through drug abuse, violence, anything like that. Those are the initiatives that are being worked on currently at ACC. And finally, the strategies that are aligned, again, some of the common themes you see here, but one thing in particular that I learned just recently, and I had to make sure it was on here, was Ms. McLaren's focus on sustained silent reading, also known as SSR. Again, knowing that reading comprehension is an issue, providing that built-in time, even if students don't necessarily need silent sustained reading, but making that more of a culture on the campus, I find to be a really, really good strategy just because again, it not only adds to the culture, but again, it helps students get that time that more than likely they are not getting outside of the school day, but providing that time to just sit down, to read, to enjoy, and to become immersed in a world that maybe perhaps they aren't always immersed in because again, I can't remember the last time I just sat down to simply read something I enjoy. I'm always reading something because I have to or because I need to, but to say I read to just read, I can't really say I've done that in a while. And so to hear that Ms. McLaren's making that a focus, I think is great because what better way to begin learning how to read or learning on what you want to read than learning what makes you excited to read? And that's not just limited to any grade level. And finally, again, making sure that presentations for counseling for drug abuse and prevention are ongoing. Again, ACC and the needs of those students on the campus, just making sure that those wraparound services are focused in those areas as the other campuses have also focused on those areas for social and emotional health as well. And that is five, six plans, I think 400 something pages condensed into 12 slides and in 20 something minutes. Are there any questions?
I have a two-part question.
Okay, two parts.
I am so glad to see the parent engagement focus that you're placing on all campuses. My experience in the past has been that parent turnout at, at class meetings and that kind of thing has been very poor. So I'm glad you're focusing on that because I would like to see more parents involved with their kids who are doing it at school, what the school district, what the school district has available to them because I don't think that, that a lot of parents know what the kids are doing in school. The other part of my question is the, your surveys. What has, what is the percentage of your response back from the parent surveys? What do you think you get back, the feedback that you get from parents?
Well, if we do one, I know that the, the feedback is high. We've, we've not had any issues with responses. In fact, that's one of the reasons why I did bring it up and we're making it a focus this year is because if we take the time to create one and to push it out, we know it's worth our time because we will get the results back and be able to take a look at that through our committees, whether it's district side base, campus side base, or another committee, whether it's, you know, threat assessment or a safety and security committee to really use that data to our advantage. And so that is definitely going to be something that as we kind of start ending this calendar year and moving into January and the next, next calendar year, 22, 23, that you will see more and more of those surveys start to go out. And not just a blanket survey with a bunch of stuff in it, but an intentional survey focused on one or two areas where that is for a particular reason, whether it's about safety, whether it's about trying to have more engaging opportunities with activities and events for families, just again, trying to give them that platform, that, that catalyst to let them know that this is a singular focus for them to us. And so it's not like they're just being included as a survey for everybody, but this is an intentional survey because we are seeking their feedback because it's valuable and it's important to us.
Well, I applaud that, and I just want to, to really, me propose, well, propose, continue to propose and engage parents because I think that there's a lot of things that parents are not aware of, and it has been my experience in the past, like I told you, that when there are parent meetings, there, the turnout is very poor. And so I'm, I'm, I'm very, very happy to see that that's a focus on all the campuses to involve parents in, in finding out what is going on in their kids' campuses, but also to get input from, from them as to what some of the needs that they may, or ideas that they may have and propose to, to the different campuses to, to, just to make sure that the parents know because I, like I said, I, I think that's a, that is a, that is a great opportunity for parents to become involved in what their kids are doing in school and that the information that they're getting is right on. It's up to date, they know exactly what's going on in their campuses with their kids, and the invitation to be a part of the decision-making processes that y'all use to have these strategies. So thank you for that.
Dr. White, on, on, looking at your, on your campus planning, it, it just jumped out at me when, when you were just kind of briefly going through and I was just kind of resummarizing through what I'd read, but I was a little concerned why you didn't have suicide on high school as well as you did in middle school. We do, we, I mean, I know, I mean, and I hope we never have to face that, but it's been a growing problem in other districts.
The reason why you don't see it on there is because it's already a focus. And so the middle school, that's really where we are beginning that focus this year. And as I said before about creating a district handbook for bullying currently and through my meetings with the counselors and nurses, we are working on the suicide prevention handbook as well, so that we'll have a handbook for bullying, a handbook for suicide prevention. And so that'll be the next thing that comes forward, and that's something that we hope to finalize before the end of the school year. The high school's already been doing those strategies and has already, you know, implemented them, and so that's not necessarily as much of a focus because those counselors already know that. But the reason why you see it on the middle school slide is because some of the counselors are unfamiliar or need more clarification or want more structure to our process. And so that's the reason why you see it there is because that's where it's kind of being driven from. And so the need to have that handbook is kind of coming from them, and so that is going to be something that we honor, which of course, any of the campuses will be able to benefit from.
I mean, I hope so because I know that things through the community and school, you know, we were able to help that one child, and I mean, that one child can change a lot of lives.
Absolutely.
You know, the, the impact that would have had on our district would have been catastrophic. I mean, I hate to, there's so much copycatting going on right now that it's, it's scary to think, you know, what could happen if unfortunately, we have that unfortunate scenario happen. So, Ms. Overrada, I'm glad that your team's already on it and faced, you know, trying to face that, you know, head on because I know that there's, in the inner city, that they're having a lot of problems with that.
With the bullying that you're talking about, does that include cyberbullying?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure because, I mean, that's huge and maybe more of that going on because they can hide behind a phone more than actually happening in the hallway these days.
And when, when we recently just met with the assistant principals at our monthly meeting, that was a key item that we did talk about, and that was one question, do we do anything different for cyberbullying? We don't. Cyberbullying is bullying and it goes with the same protocols as if it were just your traditional bullying situation. And so really, the only difference is distinguishing between what's online and the media and whether or not that occurred on campus, off campus, and determining the location to understand if it's within our jurisdiction to address that issue. But even if it's not in our jurisdiction, jurisdiction, meaning like it happens off campus, it has nothing to do with the school, however, if that is something that comes on campus and kind of disrupts the learning environment, that's the key word. Does it disrupt, is it significant enough to where now the learning environment is being disrupted? And if that's the case, then we continue on by completing that cyberbullying investigation and whatever results are found from that investigation, then we can take administrative action. And so that has definitely been some good learning that has happened this year just because like you said, is it, is it not? Yes, it is, and here's, here are the reasons why, and that handbook helps establish all that.
I would love at some time for that to be presented to us because we, we get asked questions from the community about bullying and how our school district handles it, and a lot of people don't want to give the information out and the community needs to know that we do handle bullying straight on and they need to know that their kids, it is being taken care of at, at the district level and how are we doing it? So if we could present that so that our community knows what we're doing with bullying, because I do know that we have some transfer students in our district that have left other campuses due to bullying. So it would be great if the community knew what our process is for bullying, and I would like to know myself, so. The other thing is where is this document kept? I will tell you that it took me over three hours to go through this document. It was a lot of information in here, but where is this document kept?
And by document, meaning the PowerPoint?
Or the, everything I read through.
The plans are actually, we've, we've decided to go more digital and online this year, so we've experimented with DMAC. DMAC is traditionally where we keep our student data and student performance data in, however, it has multiple apps underneath this big kind of program umbrella that we call DMAC. And so one of the apps or, I guess, yes, apps that are underneath DMAC is Planworks, where you will find the district plan and the campus plan. That's only something that administrators can access, however, if and when the plans that are being presented right now are approved, all those will go online and they will be accessible online.
Under required postings.
Okay, because as I went through it, I saw some PISD stuff in there. So what?
It's not prema.
What, what, what is that? Because it says that the parents will be able to go to this website to look at this, so I'm, I'm just wanting to know what.
That was some copy and paste issues that I had going into the system. I just need to update that. I think there were like one or two mistakes I found.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that's why I was kind of wanting to know, where's the document going?
Because we use a different framework because before we didn't have one, and so when I adopted one that aligned to e-school, which is kind of difficult to find because we're one of the, you know, unique ones out here that uses e-school, plus with DMAC, that's kind of like diamond in the rough match. And so trying to find a framework that allowed us to stay within the timeline suitable for presenting approval, but also making sure that the principals had enough time to work within that framework since this was all new. There was some editing that still needed to happen, so I appreciate.
Fine, I just wanted to make sure that we took care of that because that's a lot of information, great information.
So like, let me, so kind of expanding what Kim had just asked, do you have y'all principals read all that?
We wrote it.
You wrote it? You approved it?
We wrote it.
You all good with it?
With our site base, we did.
Yes.
That's what I was going to follow up with.
Just making sure.
Do we have any comments from them, from our principals?
Our site-based committees, we sit down after we do our campus needs assessment and we develop it and we write it together, and then I got to type all of that in. So yes, we know our plans, I think, fairly well.
And I'll tell you, at the primary school, our biggest need is parent and family engagement. And I have a poster in my office that reminds us because that's what the teacher said, we need parents to be involved. So we, the first thing I, I told Mr. Van Maitre when I met him was we need someone to help that and with the parent liaisons. I think that's provided us with that avenue to do it because with a campus of almost 900 students, it's really hard to us, for us to involve all the parents, but that is the main focus right now at the primary school is getting our parents and families engaged back in the student learning because that's what's most important, especially after COVID.
Are they accepted back to your campus at this point? Or is y'all's campus open for like, say lunch or?
Not, not yet, but we did have a night of family learning and we had an amazing turnout. So that was our first title night, and it was a tailgate activity, parents came out. Our parents are very supportive even with our campus. out. Our parents are very supportive, even with our campus being closed. We've had almost a watchdog every day on campus. We do have, we have opened up for volunteers. So if they wanting, aren't wanting to come in and volunteer, they can. And our families have been very supportive, because they know the need of the students to remain safe and having our doors closed. So we haven't received any pushback on any of those things. They still see that we are being transparent and wanting them on campus. But we're just doing it more in an organized fashion for them to be able to come, and for us to keep their students safe as well.
Do we do all calls for those activities?
Okay. Mine was just for the primary campus. And we do flyers, all types of, with title, with title nights, it's just one of those, you have to get it out there, make sure that they come in. A requirement is in English and Spanish, since Spanish is the other language that's done on predominant in our community.
And I know on my campus, I mean, my staff has seen the disconnect over the last couple of years between, you know, school and home. And we really are targeting that relationship. So we encourage and we push for 100% on-campus, you know, face-to-face parent conferences. And we're still going through that. So on our September Staff Development Day, we had Parent Conference Day, and they came in, just like the chairs outside the door, classroom doors, kind of old school. But it was, it's needed, because I know in the last year, I had a couple of parents and teachers that they've never met each other throughout the course of the year. And we need to get back to knowing who we are and creating those partnerships for our students.
I had my conference, face to face.
What an experience.
It wasn't too bad.
I didn't feel been on the other side of it.
That's very good. You know, all those pages and going through, like Kim, I went through. I noticed that I had called Chrissy to let you know.
I appreciate it. I had two mistakes. Unless there are more. Feel free to find the other one. But I don't think there are more than the two that I did find, and thank you for finding the other one.
Yeah. But anyway, it's great. I went through all that stuff, and some of the things, I know that you've done similar things in the past, but this is more structured. I mean, it was, it kept a flow, and you could see what, how, when, and everything. It looked real good. And it did take a while to go through it.
Yes, it did.
And I can imagine, I thank y'all for, you know, your site-based committees and all the work they did. And then all y'all had to do to put it together. And that was, that was amazing. I appreciate it. Good job on everyone's part.
Yeah.
And it helps you think about what you need to do, and how to achieve it. And I'm sure y'all will do it. So congratulations.
And this is just a living document, so I even met with my site base on Thursday. And we're going through them and saying, okay, is this still relevant? How do we need to change it? How can we improvement, improve it? Because we meet throughout the whole year.
And just to kind of, on my note, as Ms. Daval was talking, and just the theme of parent engagement, there will be another committee that we are looking to add. It's going to be a brand-new committee that's going to focus on Title I. And just having a true parent-focused group, where it'll be parent-heavy with a few administrators, but the group will be focused primarily with parents, hopefully representative of every campus in the district, to where it'll create a new venue for conversations about the district when it comes to parent engagement, Title I activities, just in terms of how to provide additional supports from the parent and community standpoint, in order to support all these initiatives that we got going on in the district. And so hopefully, in the next month or so, we'll have some more information on that. There will be an application and an election process with that. And so it'll be formalized, it'll be communicated out, it won't be just something that gets spoken about. And if you heard it, great, you can join. But if you didn't hear it, then well, maybe better luck next time. No, it'll be a formalized process, where everybody will have that opportunity to join if they'd like to.
That's great.
Very good.
Speaking of that, so when y'all send out these all calls, my kids are not at school anymore, so I don't receive any of those. Is it possible that the board members could get the all calls from all the different campuses?
That's what I was thinking. We wanted it.
We have to create a group for it, and I think Chrissy can set that up on school messenger.
Sorry, Chrissy.
He oversees that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's her job. Gotcha.
But parents do have to opt in to the school messenger. And that's what we're finding, is that a lot of parents are not opting in. So they're not receiving these messages. So I think some sort of a communication needs to go out to go ahead and hit yes. It's a certain number you got to type in on your cell phone, so that way parents can start getting them, if they're not already.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? That was a good report. I liked the way you compiled it from that 300 and something pages.
I think it'd be easier than what I had.
Thank you for doing that, Dr. White.
Thank you very much, Dr. White. We appreciate it. Okay. Mr. Van Maitre, please. Mr. President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the District Improvement Plan, DIP, and Campus Improvement Plan, CIP, as presented. Thank you, Mr. Van Maitre. You have motion administrative. Jan and John seconds? Any other comments, questions? Lot of good work. Thank you all for that. That was very impressive. Any other comments, questions? Are those in favor? The opposed motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. Okay, move on to discuss and consider of School Health Advisory Council. That's just SHAC discussion. Consider approval of the SHAC Health Advisory Council. Members. Mr. President, members of the board, the SHAC committee is often referred to as the Board of Trustees Committee. As such, one of your responsibilities is to oversee the population of that committee. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. White, who this year will be overseeing SHAC, along with his other responsibilities.
And so before I go into the school year '21-'22 report, this is just a precursor for school year '22-'23 with its members being presented for you all's approval. The members are, have remained the same from the prior year. And so the names on the list should look familiar. And so they're being presented to you for your approval.
Have those, Mr. Por's name on there?
Yes, that was, that was just a precursor, because they were on the committee last year. But they're not, obviously, she's not going to be on it for this year.
Have these members been notified?
Yes.
They have been notified?
Yes. Some we've heard back from, some we haven't. But we're going to try it one more time this week, because we do have our first meeting this Thursday. But we've been communicating for the last two weeks or so about it with those members.
Was there an opportunity for other members to join this year?
That was going to be something we talked about at the meeting, because we have a relatively large committee itself. And so wasn't exactly sure how we wanted to move forward, if we did want to add, because we were already at around 38 or so members. And so that was going to be something that was a topic of discussion at the next meeting, since that is something that can be discussed and agreed upon if we'd like to.
I was just wondering, since it has to be board-approved, so it's going to have to come back to.
It will.
Anytime you add a member or anything like that.
I'm used to 10 being on the committee.
We started with a large amount, but we didn't end with that. That's yours.
So what's the attendance requirement for a member?
Requirement? Majority meetings have to be attended. If not, it's not like you go on probation or anything like that. It's just, it's volunteer work, but if you're not going to be part of it, then we'll have a conversation, because that's obviously an opportunity. That could go to somebody else who could attend, if that was an opportunity for them. So there's not a requirement. Not per se, it's not like there's.
To volunteer.
It's required. Volunteers do have requirements.
Yeah. But as far as, as far as I know, I've never seen any consequences.
So will it be parent-led this year as?
That will be something that we talk about at the meeting. Just in terms of, not necessarily resetting, but myself being new over the committee, I'd like to kind of give it another opportunity to kind of go through some of the things that maybe weren't there last year, in terms of making sure that we have an election, where everybody at the group has the opportunity to vote for the chairperson and the co-chair. And now I'm kind of starting to get into my report a little bit. But I'll kind of hang back on that until we're good on this.
Mr. President, if possible, can we rearrange the order so we could hear the report before we vote on this stuff?
Well.
I'd like to hear the report before we go into picking people and approving the SHAC committee.
Members, and then a report.
So can we mean five to four, and four to five?
Well, we could do that. We've already heard the members, SHAC members on four. And if you want to hear the report, it is a pleasure of the board to hear the report. That way, you can come back and vote on four, and then vote on five. Because that's two separate items.
Yes.
Yes, please.
It's okay. If that's a pleasure of the board. Mr. Van Maitre? So, using that prerogative, can we have the presentation of last year's SHAC report for board consideration?
Okay, so switching gears somewhat to the school year '21-'22 annual report, or SHAC?
And this is a report only?
Yes. And so just to try to capture last year's work that was being done through the committee, and just to kind of give everybody's attention to why we are giving this report, as it is required by Texas Education Code 28.004, in which it states, every independent school district is required by law to have a SHAC, of which the majority of members must be parents who are not employed by the school district. The SHAC is annually appointed by the local education agency board trustees. And some of the requirements that go along with the SHAC committee are, again, a parent must serve as a co-chair. The chairperson can be voted either from the administration, or a teacher, or an employee, but it can also be a parent, too. Does not necessarily have to be an employee. A minimum of five members must be on the SHAC committee. Again, the majority of members must be parents. There must be at least four meetings a year, where at minimum, 72 hours' notice for the agenda to be posted. And so the SHAC committee follows some of the very, very similar Open Meetings Act requirements that we here as the school board has to follow. The annual report must be given to the board. And the SHAC committee, through the reporting of this annual report to the board, must submit recommendations regarding the district's health, education curriculum, where appropriate. And so the purpose, again, is to assist the district in ensuring that local community values are reflected in the district's health, education instruction, while promoting the optimal physical, emotional, social, and educational development of students. Talked about the SHAC members, we have around 38 total. SHAC meetings, we had four last year. We were trying to follow a similar meeting structure for this year, with our first meeting this Thursday. And given the number of topics that are on the agendas for this school year, we, it is possible that we might have an additional meeting. But also, depending on what actions are being recommended as far as health and sex education curriculum are concerned, we could be having some public meetings, depending on what that looks like at the committee level. SHAC topics of discussion for the year were around health and human sexuality curriculum. They also involved COVID-19 and student health safety. Talked a lot about student facilities. Had some conversations and discussions about Stop the Bleed training. And just to kind of touch on that real quick, that will be something that, at the Wednesday's principals' meeting, we will start putting a plan in place for what that's going to look like in the district this year. My goal is to ensure that all staff members have the opportunity to be trained in Stop the Bleed this year. Mental health and wellness, that was a conversation piece. Social, emotional learning, and teen pregnancy. All those items were topics of discussion at last year's SHAC meetings. As well as those topics, there were presentations given. A couple over the human sexuality curriculum. Jackie Millington came out with Coastal Bend Wellness Foundation and presented information on that curriculum. Talked a little bit about already Purple Door and Stop the Violence, and what that's looking like at the middle school. And then social and emotional curriculum, Ms. Jordan Garza, one of our high school counselors, gave a presentation on the SEL curriculum that they are incorporating, or have been incorporating at the high school. And finally, recommendations from the SHAC. At this time, there are no recommendations. However, there are several future considerations that will be on the agendas for this school year, one of which the Coordinated School Health Program will be on the agenda this Thursday. We will have a presentation given by a representative from CATCH, which is an eight-step coordinated school health program initiative that will also incorporate several items about vaping and things like that. So that will be something we learn a little bit more about on Thursday. The wellness policy and the wellness plan. COVID has really disrupted what those policies and procedures look like at the wellness level. And so we will review our district plan at the meetings as well, to determine if change is needed. Of course, looking a little bit more into detail about the curriculum for health, human sexuality, and social, emotional learning. All three of those topics, we will look at some new curriculum and some new initiatives that we are interested in undertaking. And then, of course, student support services, providing some updates on what that is looking like, specifically with our clinical services, and looking at some of the opportunities that we've been able to take advantage of. For instance, T Chat, and establishing a partnership with UT, Rio Grande Valley. And they are willing to partner with the district free of charge, no cost to the district, in terms of being able to help support some of our students who do need more intensive outside services. And that will be something we learn a little bit more about through the SHAC this year as well. And so that is the school year '21-'22 reports.
Is there any reason there were no recommendations last year?
That's what I want to know. There were four meetings.
I, we, the recommendations have to come through the curriculum. And so it was my understanding that there were no recommendations to change or to add anything when it comes to health, human sexuality, or some of the social, emotional learning. Some of that stuff was already approved at the meeting. But as far as what we currently have in policy to recommend any changes to what we are currently doing at those classes, for those types of curriculum, that was not something that was done. But it doesn't mean that that can't be on the agenda for this go-around.
There are just four meetings, and I don't know what all they meant about, but there should have been some sort of recommendation, wouldn't you think? I mean, were you not involved in this?
No, no.
He wasn't.
I was not.
I just, I didn't see a list of people who were involved in it. It just seemed like they spent a lot of time, and there was nothing that came out of it?
We had a lot of conversations about Stop the Bleed and the kits being delivered to the school. I think there was a problem getting the kits, or availability. We had a demonstration as well by the high school nurse on Stop the Bleed. That was a presentation that wasn't listed. So I don't know where the Stop the Bleed ended up. Thought the training was going to take place last year. We started that conversation early in November or December meeting.
I guess this is something that super-tenant usually goes to, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I see now. Thank you.
So I did education, as all board members did, and Stop the Bleed was a part of some of that education. Doesn't Stop the Bleed have to be done prior to school starting? Or what is the policy on that?
There's two things that can be done. You can do it through Edgero, or you can have it done through, a DPS person comes in, and you do blanket. Usually, it's better to do face-to-face, and I think that's what we've scheduled.
Correct. But we also have support of Stop the Bleed through Edgero Online, our annual required trainings. A lot of that is embedded already into those annual requirements, so we are meeting that requirement. But as Mr. Van Maitre just said, we want to also provide that face-to-face opportunity, because it's not like learning about that stuff virtually is the same as it would be face-to-face with the hands-on experience.
Yeah, you need to be able to act.
But you have to be able to have the kits.
Do we have the kits?
I don't know.
They're on order.
They're on order? So we don't have them on campuses?
We have kits, but they're not the best. We're upgrading. We're getting, you've seen the number of walls in the Hall and Park and stuff like that. We're gone with, we actually reached out to Stop the Bleed to order the kits through them. They're a much higher quality kit. And there'll be much more. There'll be one in each wing. Like at the primary, it'll be each hallway. Like at the primary, it'll be each hallway will have its own kit, as opposed to just one in a common area.
And how long, the kits that we have right now, how long have they been on campuses?
About four years, three, four years.
They're probably expired.
Well, depending on what's in the kits. We got our kits because we had, probably six years ago, we had Driscoll come and train all of our campus. And we don't have the kits that the other ones have, but we've ordered ours through Driscoll and through the fire department. And those have been on, I don't know of anything that would expire. Maybe I'm wrong.
That's what I was thinking. The fire department, when they do their check, wouldn't they check those kits also?
They don't.
They don't?
I don't think they do.
Me?
I don't think so.
Well.
I'm going to view that the first aid inspection.
That seems.
The kits and the gauze, I would think would, I mean, maybe it does go bad. I don't know.
They have expiration dates. They're torn yellow.
The tape doesn't stick.
Tape.
Yep.
I haven't looked to see if it's yellow or not.
Thank you, Dr. White, for both that report and the presentation of the members. Now, that was his report on the Shack.
So now we're back to four?
Back to four. I'm back to four. We need a recommendation there on there, sir.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the School Health Advisory Council Shack members as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meechey. Do we have motion or administrative recommendation, please? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Can I make a comment?
Well, yeah. Yeah, is there a second? Then we can make a comment.
I'm just wondering, two questions. One, if we don't vote on this tonight, does that mean the Shack can't move forward with the meeting?
It means they won't have their meeting on Thursday. Because you haven't approved to populate the committee. But that doesn't mean that we can't cancel that meeting. And if you want a special meeting to populate that, we can certainly do that and then move forward. They are under the same notices requirement that you are, 72 hours.
There's just a lot of people on here that aren't going to show up.
Well, we just got to make sure we get this.
I've seen agents here that don't work here.
Yeah.
The high school nurse is retired, Ms. Sikora is not here.
It has to be a percentage of parents, school employees.
Pageages.
I don't know. There's a list.
I mean, y'all are going to have to bring it back with new, possibly new members anyways.
The goal was to roll it and then to see from the meeting.
Reorganize.
To reorganize and to determine like who does show. So there's some strategies.
So we've got it. We need to get it.
Order so that we can actually have that meeting to discuss the membership so that we can put something in place to either recruit or go about maybe finding a different way to populate the committee since, again, I'm kind of new to it and wanting to have an opportunity to kind of start things this school year.
When I asked Dr. White to head this committee, it was obvious to me that there was significant improvement that needed to be done. So.
Yeah. And a Shack committee with 38.
Significant meaning, we needed someone to lead it. That's what we need.
Okay. A Shack committee with 38 members is rather large.
Right, so I was put in a place where I'm not sure if I can even add more because of the high number of who's are.
We need to see.
But he's also restricted by, again, the percentages of people that populate and what category they fit into. That's a key component.
Five of them have to be one.
Well, it's a certain percentage.
Yeah, they were the same five hundred. Okay, so now, does that clarify questions? Okay. Once again, we'll go over it. You read the recommendation? Is there a recommendation? Is there a motion? I'll make the motion again. Is there a second?
All second.
Kim seconds the motion. Is there any further comments or questions?
I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Yeah, I'm going to say.
I'll abstain from the vote or the recommendation, motion.
Because you're a member.
Because I'm a member.
Member of the committee, yes. Okay, I understand. Okay, one abstention, okay. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries four to one with one abstention, please.
Thank you.
I mean, it's got to happen either way. We have to have it, so.
Well, yeah, it's legislation. We have to do it.
Yeah, we have to do it. It's like, it sounds crazy for us just to come back.
We just got to.
Yeah.
We just got to.
Meeting.
Get updated with this. I mean, can you at least email us if there is?
Okay. Discussing, it said approval of food service contract renewal, Mr. Van Meechey.
Mr. President, members of the board, as you know, you went through a very long process last year for sending out a request for proposals, populating a committee, bringing back recommendations. The contract allows for you to exercise a renewal option without going through that process again. Before I turn it over to Mr. Hernandez, I have been very pleased with what I've seen so far. I think it would be very premature to not exercise that option and to allow them to have a full year and then some to show us how they can meet the needs of our children. Having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening. I'm going to try and do this without having a cough attack. To introduce the staff members that are here to help me. I have Crystal Flores. She is the food service director. She's employed by SEDEXA. We have Irene Garza. She is our child nutrition coordinator, and she's employed by TM. And then we have Chef Smith, who's employed by SEDEXA. They will be here to help answer any questions that we might have. Like Mr. Van Meechey just said, last May, we went through this process. TDA does the contract. We have an option to renew that contract yearly for up to four more years, for probably five years to go with the same vendor. Or if we're displeased with the services, we can rebid the entire process. The window for that entire, for both processes, rebidding and renewing, opened up this week. And we have to submit all our documentation by December the 31st of this year to decide what we're going to do. All right? The contract renewal would be only for one additional year, starting on July the 1st and ending on June the 30th for an additional year. Now, SEDEXA's only been doing this job for three months. They basically start on July 1st. In giving the, you know, in trying to determine how I could prove that they've added value to the district, you know, I thought about bringing people to give presentations and anything. But really, we just need to look at the hard numbers. I look at the comparisons of the numbers for this year. The amount of meals served from this year compared to last year, the exact same month. And in the month of July, it was a wash. It was less than 1% change in the meals. But in the month of August, we had a 6% increase in the number of breakfasts served and an 11% increase in the number of lunches served. In the month of September, we had an 11% increase in the number of breakfasts served and 15% increase in the lunches. I'm told that these numbers for September represent the numbers where we were at last year towards the end of school in April and May, which is typically our higher meal counts at that point in time. So our students are starting to eat more. We're having a better selection. We're actually cooking food and we're just not eating and serving. Now, everything hasn't been perfect. We've had some hiccups. Of course, we started off great with the pasta meal and everybody loved that. We transitioned to what I call the fiasco potato week. We went to a potato menu, and that was not successful at all. So things that we learned from that mistake was we will transition slowly. We'll not flip the entire menu at once. We'll make sure that things that are served that our kids do like are offered and we'll slowly transition new products, which we did today with a ramen noodle menu, and it was not a success. But there was plenty of other options for the kids to try. It may work great at a district up in north in the Panhandle, but it wasn't a success here.
Worked great at the college level.
Other things, the only other major fiasco or incident that we had is where some bad peaches were served at the high school. And that's involved some training from SEDEXA and how they process the food. They inspect it and make sure that the managers are taking a look at what's being served online so that doesn't happen again. The peaches were, it looks like the peaches were frozen inadvertently. And so when you take a peach, you freeze it, and when it thaws out, it's pretty mushy on the inside, and it wasn't good or pretty at all. So overall, we're doing a good thing. They're doing a good service. We're giving our kids better options. So the recommendation is that we do give them another year trial. And we just need to learn from our mistakes.
I have a question. And we've had this conversation before. I've had it with Ms. McLaren. And to follow the theme of ACC tonight, the services they're receiving, what can we do to improve their meals?
I think what we need is probably a better hot holding system that allows us to deliver the food better. And that way, it stays, hot food stays hot, cold food stays cold. And then maybe even possibly having a staff member specifically there that's part of our staff that knows how to handle the food. Not that they're not handling it correctly, but we know what to do if something's not right.
So is there equipment we need to buy to satisfy that?
I think so.
Okay. Can you identify that so we can move forward? If particularly, even if the bond doesn't pass, I think we have an obligation to those kids.
They deserve it.
Yes.
Do they have the same food choice?
Yes. So then they get a menu and they call in an order to us.
So do they have the same food choice as the high school or?
High school.
No, we, not, well, let me clarify. At the beginning of the year, our kids were looking at the menu. They would send a menu. So if there was Chinese, or they were, let's say they were having Chinese bowls, we might have eight kids that choose that, and some other kids would choose other things. And then they said, this is just too hard because there's too many choices to transport. So we give them two options per day, and the kids vote on what they want, and we call that in. So, you know, some of the things that they really liked, like the Chinese and some of those things, they can't choose those anymore because they were like a weekly option. There was like a daily option, a weekly option. And I understand it's very difficult when you're transporting it. And by and large, the kids are okay. And our kids will eat just about anything. My concern more than anything has been with the amount. Like on, one day, the kids were saying to me, really, this is all we have? And I'm like, well, guys, I don't know what to tell you. And I looked in the bags and I thought somebody had taken stuff out. But there was an orange and a sandwich. And that's all they got. Well, for high school kids, a sandwich and an orange isn't a lot of food.
High school kids can eat more than that.
So I mean, I don't know whether it can, and really, the heating issue is the biggest issue we have. Crystal's right. You know, it comes to us, and by the time it gets there, it's already chilled off. And so we put it in the warmer, but it's not in the warmer long enough to where it's hot by the time you serve it. So they eat cold food. And some of it.
Set up something like this out here, over there?
Oh, like on a chafing dish? We can do that for a temporary solution, yeah.
I mean, would that help? At least some food that's hot?
Well.
How many students are we talking about, Ms. McLaren?
About 40. Right around 39 or 40 every day.
I mean, during the middle of the day, we couldn't just transport them to the cafeteria?
We can't take that kind of time away from the session. There's no way.
I mean.
The ideal place would be to have a cafeteria.
I mean, my solution would be, I mean, your high school's at 50% capacity.
65.
Okay, still, there's still plenty of room.
Yeah, but they're starting lunches early and ending lunches late already up there.
They're NAC because they didn't.
I'm just saying that.
Why would you transport them back for lunch?
What I'm saying is that if you move the campuses around, Jan, you now have this kitchen there at the school. What I'm, I mean, you're talking about building, you're talking about building a cafeteria where we have portables.
Make a portable cafeteria?
You know, it's.
We have.
I don't know. According to the report, the portables aren't even within ten years.
And like I said, the food, if we had a way to keep it warm or to get it warm once it gets there, and I don't know, Crystal, maybe you can tell us, what's the difference from last year? Did they deliver it a lot earlier last year, so it was in the warmer longer?
Um, possibly. I mean, we've had, we don't have a driver right now, but I can't remember who we talked to last week, and we asked her, what time do you want the food there? And they told us 11:40.
I might have to call a point of order, and my point is, we're way off of subject. We're talking about renewal of food service contract. We're getting into things that could be discussed at a later time administratively with everyone else involved. Because our point right now is talking about a food service contract. Thank you. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Patrick.
That's basically it. If there's any other further questions on the process, we can definitely look at that. We have Lamar Womack, I'm sorry, Bill Wilson.
You're way back now, Patrick.
Womack.
Bill Wilson, that's doing the remodel at the high school, and we can have him definitely look at ACC and give us some options to rectify that.
Because we have a lot of money in the food budget.
Don't we have money in that food service budget? I mean, so if you buy the equipment.
I think a hot serving line for them would help a lot. I mean.
35 kids.
It's not that many kids.
It's not that many kids that we couldn't find a way to get, have them have the same opportunities to enjoy a meal as they would at the high school.
They deserve better.
Yes. I think, I think we need to just get better equipment. There's some equipment out there. I don't know. That's my thought in this deal, but back to the important hand.
Yeah.
So I guess the point had is either approve this or go out for bids again.
Okay, I would like to say that I am thankful that this was brought to the board and we're actually being able to discuss this without being under a huge deadline that we have to meet. So I do appreciate this being brought to the board now instead of at the very last minute this year. So I'm very appreciative to that, so that we can make decisions on what needs to be done with the food service here at TM.
So Patrick, what brings this after three months?
The window, the TDA's window is from October 15th to December the 31st.
If we decide, if we decided to go out for a bid.
Either way, renewal or, there's a process for renewal and there's a process for redo.
So in May, when we did this deadline that, as I was saying, what got us to that deadline there?
Last year, we didn't have an option. We were forced to rebid. So we submitted all our paperwork by December the 31st. And then once it had to go out to bid, and then we, you're ranked and all that, and then that puts us at the end of May. So it would be the same thing. If you decided that we needed to rebid, we would get the contract ready. TDA would approve it probably late January, February, and it would go out to bid, and then we'd be coming back to you in May with a selection.
Right. So, and that brings an interesting scenario because at that point, the, in the past, I know that once we did this, they went into a four-year contract renewing every year, right?
Yeah, you have the option to renew every, we have to bring it to you every year. We can't just lump some.
But it's a four-year contract renewal every year.
Yes, sir.
It'll be about this time every year.
Yes, sir.
Should be.
Because it has to be in by the end of December, between now and December 31st with TDA.
Without changing the rules.
Yes. Yes, you're right. That's a good point.
They change the rules, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the renewal of the food service contract with SEDESCO for one additional year from July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024.
I want to sound a little in that recommendation, Mr. President.
No, second.
Okay. John made a motion. Kim second. Any other comments or questions? Are all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries zero. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I would say something, but he still hasn't told me. I would say something, but he still hasn't told me how to leave. Okay. We move on to the discuss and consider approval of part-time TMISD events and communications coordinator.
Mr. President, members of the board, as you know, the Talosa Midway Education Foundation has been without an executive director for several months. That has created somewhat of a burden on Ms. Castillo for not only serving my needs and your needs, but also the foundation's needs, because they provide such a valuable service with resources that doesn't come from our general fund for supplies and projects for our teachers. This is a two-part agenda item. The first part is me coming to you, asking for your approval to create a, a full-time position that has two part-time responsibilities with it. The first part of the job would be the executive director of the Education Foundation and would remain a Talosa Midway ISD employee. The second part of the recommendation would be to have this person assist in a district level position with events and functions like traditionally you see at the high school. This person would coordinate events at primary, intermediate, ACC, middle, wherever there's an event that needed some professional assistance, this person would be responsible for that, as well as operating social media for the district and communications. If you approve this, then the next step would make it a very fiscal neutral position. We are not going to add anyone. We're not going to add any expenditures. The person that we will talk about in executive session is already a TMISD employee. The stipend that would come with this, it has already been approved in the budget. So it's someone that the high school can do through their personnel arrangements, cover this, so there's no fiscal, it's not a growth position. I've already met with the Education Foundation's Chair, Chairman of the Board. He's very supportive of this and plans to take it to his board for their oversight the 1st of November. But that can't happen without action by the trustees tonight.
Can you just explain what the roles will be, like what, what will be done with the Education Foundation, what the role is?
Well, she would, that person would be responsible for currently three major events, the luncheon, cum laude, and the golf tournament. But from what I understand, there's going to be a vision to expand that, as well as the prize patrol, the grant submission, and getting the funds and the resources out to the teachers. I see the foundation, under new leadership, their role greatly expanding than what I just mentioned.
On the foundation issue, though, is there ever a vision on it being self-sufficient like others? Because this would be, I mean, you're saying that they're already employees, so that's what would be, I mean, if they have a full-time status, they're going to have a part-time, a full-time, part-time status with the same, and one is under contracts.
They're going to have two, basically, .5 positions. The responsibilities that they have right now at the high school, Mr. Alvarado has developed a plan to meet the needs of those students internally.
That's a closed session, I don't regret.
Yeah.
I mean, from what I've read, I mean, then wouldn't the discussion then have to be done in closed session as well?
Well, what you're doing, if you don't approve, if you don't approve the creation of the position, then it's a moot point to go into executive session.
Right.
Well, all we're doing is approving the position.
That's correct. That's correct.
And I guess my question then would be, and that would be the district responsibility for payroll, though.
That's correct. That could change in the future as the foundation grows.
When has the foundation been established?
I have no idea.
So you've had 18, almost 18 years to be self-sufficient, and the director is a part of our budget. Now we'd end up with the position and the administrative assistant. So now we'd have two people from the foundation on our payroll then.
Well, no.
No.
The 50% of the position is working directly for Talosa Midway ISD.
Right, I understand that. But that includes benefits and everything else.
That's correct. There's no employee that doesn't have benefits.
Right. So you're-
With the exception of me, I do not have benefits. You pay, you pay a surcharge for me, and you pay, it's not a penalty, you pay a surcharge, and you pay a surcharge for the other retiree hires. But as far as healthcare, TRS, those types, doesn't happen with me. Or cellphone, I don't get cellphone.
Well, that surcharge, I guess that could be on a topic a little different, because I know we'll get a point of order on that. My, this, this creation of this position, though, it just seems like it's... I mean, I think it's well-needed. I think Ms. Castillo stretched out way too far, but...
I think-
I don't, I don't think that the salary was implemented along with the position that was held presently, or the addition to that, or the stipend to. I don't know. I mean, I don't get into Ms. Castillo's business. I'm just saying there's, seems to be a pattern of a growth that there's a pay salary going back to the foundation employees or, or administrators. But if it exercises, I mean, I would exercise a position with you guys. I just would, after, I think that after 18 years, we really need to get them on their own.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Because I think we missed out-
I would totally agree with that.
I think we missed out on a lot of things that this, this Northwest Business Association did with Cal Allen.
I, I think you and I share a vision that, that Education Foundation can be a goldmine for Talosa Midway ISD teachers. And I think if you get, if you vote to have this position, I think with, with the right individual, it can really take off.
Plus the influence for the district and communications coordination. That's, that's a big job right there.
Well, no, we were, we talked about a communication personnel that was shot down in the past, but, and I mean, I'm just saying, I believe that this position does need to be established. I just don't know if it should be an act, you know, if it should be a, a full-time, part-time. I know it's split duties and different budgets are going to come in, but at the end of the day, it still comes out of the school budget, where it should just be itself entity. But if you will proceed, I mean, I think we should vote on this.
Okay. Have you made a recommendation?
I haven't.
You haven't?
What'd you like for me to?
Yes, please.
We'd love for you to.
I can do that. Let me find it. It is the, Mr. President, members of the board, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the part-time Talosa Midway ISD events and commission, and communications coordinator position and Talosa Midway Education Foundation executive director position as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Van Metry. Jan made the motion, and Kim second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion case six zero. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, would it be a pleasure to take a five-minute break for us?
It's a great idea.
I think that that would be a good, uh, let's make it five minutes or 10 minutes?
Five.
Whatever we can do.
Okay. Let's, let's say five and, well, shoot for 10 and get back, get back. It is 9:25 PM, October 17, 2022. This board is back in open session, and we're going to move on to discuss and consider approval superintendent evaluation instrument.
Mr. President, members of the board, I bring you one of many superintendent evaluation instruments. This is the one that I've been familiar with for the past eight or nine years. You have all the authority to approve it, amend it, throw it out, use something different. This evaluates the superintendent under eight categories. Instructional management and student performance, administrative and school climate, school improvement, personnel management, fiscal and facilities, student management, community relate, community board relations, and professional development and growth. But again, that this is a summative instrument for you to consider.
Yes. Now, if y'all will remember, this is a familiar instrument. We've had one like this before. We got away from the numbered one at one time because that became rather cumbersome. And we went to this, this evaluation type instrument that, and I believe this is either a TASSA or a TASB one.
I'm sure it is.
Because it looks so familiar, because it gives it to you as opposed to the vertical, this is horizontal. That's the only difference. The thing's exceptional, proficient, needs improvement, and then an overall rating, and then a comment. They all had the same thing, and they all had the same proportion of it. But the summative, if you remember, we always run into the issue when it comes down to student, uh, well, we're only getting down to the end, it's student achievement, because that does not come out till later in the years.
Well, keep in mind, you're evaluating me later.
Yeah, well, because-
Normally, it would be a January evaluation.
Right.
But, I mean, it's your prerogative, however you want to do it. If you want to keep it on a January, or if you want to do it, I think, I forget when my contract started.
Well, it needs to be, we need to, we've got goals and things, but we need to establish those as our objectives, the goals.
We still can have a, we have a 11-1 in Jan, just to see how things are going.
Yeah, because it's a formative. A formative would be good, because it's only been here for just, it's just like SEDEXO. They've only been here three months. And for an evaluation, for a summative, you normally are here for a year. This would meet the category of a formative, and like you said, the summative would put him into the category, Mr. Van Metry, into the category of some superintendents that do get a summative later on in the year, when they get the student achievements and everything in. So that would be a good thing. But you can still, as a practice, use this as part of your formative as well, because that's how, how are we doing as a team, is what it amounts to, and how Mr. Van Metry is going to do.
You should do two a year regardless. I think you should do two a year regardless.
Well, that's, they, there's supposed to be a formative and a summative. And the formative is less formal than the summative. The summative is the ones you base the contract renewal and any increases that may come about.
When was the last superintendent evaluation we've done?
The last one? Probably Rodney.
Did we do the summative, or did we do the formative?
We did both. We did both. We did both of them, Rodney. And unfortunately-
And I'm sorry I don't remember. I just, I was just trying to think. But you're right, we did change this format. What did we go to? Because we got away from the numbers, and we went into this one.
We went into this one, but as opposed to the horizontal, exceptional, you know, proficient, needs improvement, it was over here on this side, and you wrote a comment like that to the side of it. Whereas this one's at the top, you evaluated, you check it off, and then you put your comment down there. Gives you more space, actually. And it does follow the TASSA and TASB superintendent evaluation form. It's very, because that's what we got away from. We'd used that numbered one for several years and-
It was aligned more with the district, with the goals of the superintendent.
Yes, yes, aligned more with the goals and everything. And that's one of the things that we need to discuss.
This is familiar to most of us. You have a problem with that?
No.
No, I can use this easily.
I was going to say, this would be better we asked the new members. I mean, I think-
Yeah, well, that's, that's what we're giving, that's why I gave this a little bit of a spiel for people that haven't been through it before, so they know that there is a summative and a formative. The formative is just a, how's it doing, how's it doing? Are you meeting these goals? And the summative is the one that's, okay, you are meeting these goals, here's where you need to, you know. The formative is, you know, hey, let's get on track, let's go, move in the direction we're supposed to be. And then the summative is, well, this is what you need to do for next year, and what we as a team need to do to make sure that it's achieved for the students of the district. So that was just my explanation. Do you, Janie or Ken have you?
I think it's great.
Y'all can follow it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Everyone else?
It's very self-explanatory.
Okay. Mr. Van Metry?
I think the recommendation has to come from you.
I was hoping you'd do it. The board makes a recommendation to approve the superintendent contract superintendent evaluation instrument as presented. Do we have a motion on it, Ms.?
One second.
Okay. Janie and John, any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Motion case six one. Thank you very much.
Six zero.
Six zero.
I mean, six zero, excuse me. I was sitting there. I was thinking about that abstentions and everything else. Discuss and consider proof of first reading of TASB policy DH local. Remember, that's the one that we had the discussion on, that we pulled out from the last update that TASB had given us because of some situations that had happened. And it will bring us more in line with what the rest of the districts are doing, if I remember correctly.
Yes. What you're doing, what I'm recommending you do is use your flexibility to implement policy on first reading versus two readings because of the nature of the policy change. If you look on page four of five, the amendment to DH local is redacting the arrests, indictments, convictions, and other adjudications to where any arrest, the employee needs to notify his or her principal or immediate supervisor. And I think, particularly with Ms. Boone, you were one, this is consistent with what you were asking for.
It does make it in line with what other policy, district policies are.
Yes, but you are deviating from your normal policy standards of two readings versus one, but you do have the authority to do that.
Yes. Whereas we did review it in that first, that first policy update that TASB does. So you can feel comfortable that, yes, we had it, and on the second reading, these are the recommendations. It's just the way that it's stated first reading.
I think this is in the best interest of our district.
Okay. I do as well. Did you want to make a recommendation? Any other comments or questions?
It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the updates to TASB policy DH local as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Van Metry. Kim makes the motion. Do we have a second? Janie makes the second. Now, y'all do understand that it was policy first when TASB first put it out, like the first reading, we made amendments to it, correct? So this would actually be- So this would actually be.
Final.
Okay, so everybody understands that. Are there any other comments or questions?
So we're just removing the, the additional writings is what you're.
It's, it's the, it's the next to last bullet, arrests, indictments, and convictions, and other adjudications. That section, all the criterion under it.
And this is after the situation we were, right, that we are kind of how these concerns, I guess, I guess would be the best word.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I don't understand. So why are we crossing all those out?
They don't exist anymore. It's any arrest now.
Any arrest, okay, so just any, not just specific.
Those were exceptions to reports.
Just any arrest. So we end it and then?
Yes, and they have three days.
To notify.
That's correct.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Or the opposed motion case six, six zero. Okay, we have a report out of board debriefing and discussion of recent TASA, TASB, or Texas Con twenty twenty-two. Who would like to start? Jan would like to start that off.
First draw.
Two things I wanted to talk about. I was, one of the legal H R sessions I went to talked about the teacher shortage, how teachers are applying for jobs and they don't get hired because it's pending board approval. So they talked about the board giving the, through a resolution, the authority for the superintendent to hire teachers.
I've always had that.
I think that's something I would like to see on a future agenda for discussion. Think that we are losing teachers and good, they're going to other districts because they have to wait a month.
Offered contracts prior to us meeting. Have you worked with that before?
That's all I've worked with. What's new to me is how we do it here.
How long has our post been in existence?
I have no idea.
Probably forever, but.
Yeah.
I mean, how long have you been H R?
Twenty, twenty-two years, but the superintendent has asked of that before, but there's been one more board member who has strongly opposed that, he's no longer here with us, strongly opposed that, strongly, he just never carried.
And it is a wise decision because there's many superintendents in the state of Texas that have that authority.
I got a question on that. I mean, and I know you're gonna give your report, but I just have a question. Because unfortunately, I didn't go to that session. Would this also be for principals?
Well, let me, what my philosophy has been is, yes, it would be legally, but I would never hire an administrator without board approval.
So that could be defined in the resolution.
Yes.
Well, I'm just saying, because when we were.
This is primarily just for teachers.
Just for teachers, okay. Well, anyway.
Okay, I have one more.
Now, now we're doing the debriefing for Texas Con.
She's got a whole list here.
Anyway, until she's done then.
No, this is, kind of touched my heart a little bit. I went to the Liefert I S D, was named Board of the Year on Sunday morning, and they had a panel with their superintendent. And Liefert's a district in, in region one with about, I guess, I think fourteen hundred students, but they focused their success on a team of eight plus. They talk about the seven board members and their superintendent, and they also would include the CFO and that team, where they'd say the plus CFO, the curriculum director. They talked a lot about how they maintain constructive, constructive and pleasant relationships with each other in, in the boardroom and outside the boardroom. They talked a lot about why not us and why not our kids. They also talked about their pride and their tradition, and I think the one, at the very end of the panel, it's about an hour long. What touched me was a district trustee stood, from another district, stood up and said that she was jealous of their relationship. You could just see the harmony in this board, and I'm gonna say I'm jealous too.
I agree with you more.
Who else would like to report?
Is it for a little? Good, Ms. Karen, you can go.
Who, me? I actually attended a, a field trip while we were at convention, and I got to visit Bernie Elementary, actually Paul and me went together. And they just built a new elementary school, which I was very excited about because, um, hoping to get to do this here at TM. But their way of teaching at this elementary school was amazing. The kids were able to be a part of their education, and everybody worked as a team, and some kids would be working outside of the room, some of the kids were working inside of the room. It was just to walk through there, you could feel the excitement of the elementary school and how much they wanted to learn and how, it was, it was an amazing.
Was it a Montessori campus?
It was not a Montessori campus. Um, just, it, it was a lot of fun, a lot of fun to walk through there. I, I could have stayed there forever just playing with those kids, but, um, the, the way that they were learning, it was a different way, and it was, it was a bigger picture of not just sitting in a classroom. They, the chairs, chairs that they had, they were wobble chairs to where the kids could just move around. They had desks where the kids could stand up, and this is all going on in the same classroom, but they're all learning at the level that they need to be learning at with the different desk levels. And every kid had what they needed to learn. So that was really cool to get to go there. We spent a long time there. And the kids even told us what they loved about their school at the very end, and that is what it's all about, is what the kids think about their school. And, and so that was really cool. Then we totally flipped and went to San Antonio, went to Jefferson High School. This is a historical site. It is the most beautiful high school I have ever seen. Those kids have no idea how blessed they are to go to school there. Flags of every nation is down the hallway, and their auditorium, I could, you couldn't even take enough pictures. It wa- it was amazing. Unfortunately, they had had an incident that week, so they weren't as organized with taking us around their, their district. They had had a scare that week, but they did a great job of showing us everything that was going on there. And they don't have a brand new school, but those kids are, are learning also. So you got to see this really, really rich school district with all this new stuff, and then you saw a really, really old district. But all of them were educating kids and doing a great job, and the hoops that they have to jump through to get anything done at that Jefferson High School, bless them, because they've got to deal with the historical side of it also. But both campuses were beautiful, it's exciting. Um, here at TM, we have beautiful facilities also. So anyways, it was very eye-opening, and the stuff that we can do with the elementary school is very exciting.
It is.
It's very exciting. And so that was fun. So my field trip was, was a whole lot of fun. I learned a whole lot of stuff, but my field trip, I'm glad I went on it.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I want to add on to what she, it was, it was a doctor, I can't remember what his first name was, but here, elementary in Bernie, and I'll kind of add on to what she is saying. They designed the school, they had community members and all kinds of architects and everyone involved. And the way that they designed the school was an intentional method. You had to buzz in to get into the vest- vestibule. It was all bulletproof glass. You had to be buzzed in after you got checked in, and we all got our little badges. And when you walked in, you didn't see the classroom hall anywhere. You opened into it, and they did this intentionally. When you walked in, you looked down, it was just a big open area where they did have areas where they had some pre-K, pre-K kids working with these little robotic bugs. They, they had to learn how to do these patterns and stuff, and a stairway over here, and then had a long ADA compliant ramp that went around. Well, if, once you got down there, you still couldn't see where any classrooms were. You looked down this long hall, there was glass windows here and there, and you saw a playground with this big fence around the outside of it. And inside, if I remember correctly, some of the playground areas were even fenced off, and they had watchdogs out there. They had eighty of them, eighty watchdogs, but that particular day, they only had about sixty. I talked to one of them.
These parents were serious.
And I'm going, my goodness, you know?
I know.
And then you, you couldn't tell where you were. We walked down that hall, there was a cafeteria off to the right. I was going, okay, where are the classrooms? And I looked out across this, I could see buildings and windows and stuff. They took us back upstairs, you walked down this long hall that turned, right? You didn't see any classrooms till you made that turn. Up a few steps was the special ed department, which you had to have a card to get into. They didn't even take us in there. We went around and we got to see the classrooms and like what Kim was.
Is it pre-K five campus?
Yes. What, what Kim was talking about was there were interactive areas in kind of like pods of classrooms, you know, around this big pod area where they had computers, computer desks. Like she said, that they could raise up and down, they had the wobble chairs and all this. Teachers were out there, of course, in Paris, but inside the classrooms, they had interactive materials and everything. And there were kids in there, and like she said, inside, outside, and we're going, who's doing it? But the kids and the teachers all were just, I mean, they were on top of everything. They walked around with the kids and helped them out, and there was a watchdog dad, remember that one, that was doing some kind of cooking over there one day for a class.
They actually did the cooking. It was so cool.
It, it was for these kids, you know, and there was, some of them were sitting there eating a li- like a little brunch or something, and there was others over here working. And there was one, it was a kindergarten teacher, I remember walking by her room. I looked in there and it kind of dark looking, and I walked in, I looked in there, and remember the ones had that big tent thing back in the back going out? But there weren't any kids in there, no, there was, there was a couple of them, but most of them were out on the outside. But that was part of their interactive studies that they were doing on, what was it, camping or something, I forget. But then you went up.
Very interactive.
Yeah, and as you went up and went around some more, more twists and turns, they went to the, ah, what did they call that one room? It had all the activities.
They had a sensory room.
It was a sensory room, but it was for every kid.
All level.
All levels, all levels of kids could go in there.
Yeah, all the kids shared this sensory room.
Yeah, and they had all kinds of different activities in there, and oh my goodness. This one gentleman and I looked at it, we tried to figure out, and oh, you know, and this kid says, well, this is how it stood. Teacher said, not now. So he didn't do it. And anyway, but it was quite impressive on the way that they structured the school, and they kept it intentionally like that, that if they were by any chance, anything could happen. They had an opportunity that, that they, actually, if you didn't see it, they had doors and stuff that they could close that went into where those classes were.
Yep.
I mean, things where an intruder couldn't get through.
Yeah, if you didn't know the school, you would have never found classrooms. You wouldn't have, yeah, you would have been stopped.
Do you know how big a student population that school was?
That, that school district was small.
Yeah, that was, that was.
They took us to one of the smaller ones.
Yeah, yeah, I think what's, what's it say? They had almost five hundred, something like that.
How new was that school?
It was built, it was, uh, two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was really new, but it was just neat to see the kids not sitting in a classroom all day long. I mean, they all are like little ants, so if they could get that out while they're being educated at the same time, it was just really cool. So I enjoyed the field trip.
And all the desks, they were the type that you could move around. They intentionally bought them like that for those, where you could move them, or they could put them in a pod, or you could move them where they could sit apart. And some of the upper grades, they had to move apart, yet they could work together if they.
Yeah, it helped with their labs, so they could help work together as a team, and learn very young to do that, which is great.
I mean, it was amazing. And then going over to Thomas Jefferson, that was, I was impressed. At first, I thought it's college campus. It was built back in nineteen thirty-two for one million dollars. And like she said, the auditorium, it had the original seats in there. Being a historical site, the renovations, they were having to take out stuff that was the old and put it back, the new material as it was. It had to be because it was a historical site. And the library had the stuff you go, I mean, it looked like some things from an old nineteen thirties movie. You know, the desks and the card catalogs were all in there.
It smelled like that too, but it wasn't a, I don't mean that to be a bad smell, but you don't get that smell when you walk into a library now. People don't use libraries anymore hardly, but it was just really historical, it was neat.
And one of the things that the gym and all that good stuff is one of the few that it was still the original, had the bleachers built up in concrete, and the floor was down, it was probably the biggest one, right? But anyway, what was the name of the, the dance group? Remember, we went back to that, way back in the back, their nationally recognized dance group.
Different group than me, I didn't get to see all that.
You didn't get to see that? It was amazing. They had their.
What was it?
The Lariats or the Lassos?
Lassos. They were nationally recognized and get invited all over the United States, and they had them all the way back from thirties, some of the uniforms and how they progressed, and they still do it. They had their own gym. It looks like a place where ballerinas learned to dance, you know, and everything, and I'm going, oh my gosh. And they had the, that young lady, the instructor, she was, she was, she was probably good at that because she never stopped moving. She was just everywhere and everything. It, it was amazing. And I, I, I enjoyed that quite a bit. And, of course, I went to one on sexual abuse, and that was eye-opening. It was terrible about all the stuff. And the one thing that they put across was that no matter who it is in a school system, and most everyone it's in or has been in the school system knows that they are aware of any kind of sexual abuse or mistreatment or anything, they have to report it. Otherwise, there's some stiff penalties that come along with it. They were emphasizing that quite a bit. And of course, always the general, second general session, they always have the TASB president and the TASSA president, their school districts present. And one was from my second, well, the first session, first general session was Las Flesnos I S D. They put out an absolutely fantastic performance. And the other one was from Longview, and my goodness, I tell you what, that, those kids, our kids could do it as weird as they are. I tell you, it was amazing. And then, of course, I did go, there's no I in team, and then I went to the other one, uh, superintendent of the year. And when they first introduced him, I'm going, my goodness, he doesn't look like that first, that superintendent of the year. He was more countryfied, I guess you'd call it. It was Dr. Bobby Pock from Temple, and he had pretty much the same philosophy as the team of I had. I mean, team, you know, no I in team, the Board of the Year. And also had a superintendent of the year from last year is H D Sanchez from Plainview. And they had some interesting points, and they pretty much brought up the same thing. It was a team of eight, they all worked together good, everybody worked well. And they also brought in all their cabinet members into board meetings and stuff, kind of much like what we do. But then if they had a special thing or goal settings or team building, they brought them into that as well. So that way everybody understands what everybody's doing, you know, Temple's considerable. Temple's considerably larger than we are, and that's a good idea. I mean, it gets everybody on the same page. The way he talks is, he couldn't do it without a team, you know? It takes all of us. And he meant all of us when he was talking about the team of eight. He's also talking about everybody. And he's talking about kids and everything. Kind of reminded me of you because he said he likes to get out into the schools.
Yeah, favorite talent today.
He said, that's, he says kids, that's the main thing. He said all of it, what, if I remember, he, he the one who said it. All of it, to be a board member who was that in the team of eight, you have to love kids.
Actually, I saw Mr. Van Maitri up there receiving that ring. Yep.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think so. Why not?
Why not?
Why not? Anyway, I'm, I'm, it's somebody else's turn. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm the last one, and I honestly, I mean, I caught a few classes. I had some issues going on back home, so I was in and out of the conference, so. I, I did catch a couple of classes that I, that really intrigued me, and just basically just talking with the presenters. I stepped into a class that was a very important ISD, which I think I had already been in there, because that sounded very familiar. But I did, I did get to meet the new su- that superintendent there. And she's very positively moving that all of the things that are going on there. I met their financial manager, which I think I had more, I had more. I got more information from him than a couple of the things I sat in on, because some of them were just off the wall, but. But talking about the presenters, one of the things I think I took away from the conference more than anything else was that the NFL player that, that spoke on the second, I guess it was the second general session. And I lo- I loved the fact that he, when he mentioned that in, in his family, you were either a teacher or a preacher. Or you were a teacher becoming a preacher, one of the two. And but just to hear his story of how he followed a dream. But he still never gave up on education. He actually, after all the years he spent even in the NFL, he went back and got a degree. And I think that that, the reason that took me there was because we talk about all these beautiful programs and everything. And it's great to do this and offer tomorrow's little onboard or connect a partnership that we're about to do. Those are all great, but he really had this sense of pride that he actually finished. He went back to finish his degree, that he knew that his life wasn't complete until he finished that. And as, as he was talking about that, you know, that, that was what I was getting out of it, like, wow, you know? He never stopped following what he was intended to do. And he never said he was actually a teacher. He just said that, you know, he went back, he went back to the University of Texas, finished his, his degree there. And I just thought, you know what, if you just, out of all the things that we do in all these conferences we go to, you know? To, to be able to measure, you know, our student success in a post grad, in a, or in a higher level of education. You know, that, that would be something to hear back from some of these kids with these opportunities we give them. Especially like the trips that we approve, you know, I think that would be, to hear their success stories. To the, whomever's sitting in the board at that time, it's, you'll see, you know, where it benefits their life more than anything else. And so I took a lot away from that little conversation. He wasn't even that, it wasn't even that detailed of a, of a topic. I guess just in the frame that I was in and then walking into that. It was very interesting to, when you think about what he must have gone through. Because he, he, I think he had a fairly large family, if I remember correct.
I think his mom was a teacher, right?
His mother was a teacher.
That's why I was saying, I think he said, if you weren't a teacher, you're a preacher.
Yeah.
And I just thought, you know, I thought, wow, you know, you, you have good examples, you know? Even though you could, I can't even imagine how much money he made for the Chiefs. But even, even with all that, he realized it was nothing without his degree.
Look what he was giving back to kids to-
Yeah, oh, and oh, that's right, and other programs he-
He was giving back all the programs.
He had like his whole setup to give back to the community there in Austin, so. I thought that was great. And I think he would be a great motivated speaker to have. Well, I don't know, you know, we can do assemblies or stuff like that, you know, the way the world is today, but. He'd be great for, for kids to hear, because he was very driven, a very driven leader.
He was.
That's really the one I would like to share the most.
Anybody else?
Let me get, I have one. I didn't go to the one that all y'all went to, but Paula and I went a couple of weeks ago. Oh, I can't talk about that one? Okay.
It's a mosque next week.
Okay, that's next month? All right, that's good.
I was already told that.
You were told that? All right, move on.
Yeah, and I forgot, I forgot to mention-
That's close. It had the same thing.
That old auditorium at Jefferson. It had twenty-one hundred people. It was amazing. Anyway, I just had to say. I got pictures of the artwork and everything around there.
He doesn't want me to say it, but he was an alumni of the height.
Really?
I mean, over here, he was like calling out names.
When you were going to school there, did you actually like take in everything that was there? Because I don't know, as a student, if they're really taking in what they have.
We took great pride in that school. The courtyard, we would go on the weekends and we'd work on the courtyard, maintain the fountain. There was a fire. One of the trophy cases caught fire when I was there. We raised, fundraised to get it replaced just the way it was. The movie Johnny B. Good was filmed in that gym.
That's what he told us. I forgot about that.
It was so neat.
Yeah. It was, it was, it was amazing. They were the ones that had that.
The scare.
Fake active shooter when they had everybody. They said that was crazy. You know, the school was okay. It was all in lockdown, everything, everything was secured and everything. It was the parents on the outside trying to get in, and the police had a hard time with it. He said, you can imagine. Okay, is there anything else? Okay, we can move on to the next report. It's announcement of continuing education hours for board members. It's a little different format than what we normally have. Normally, we have a list of all the hours and everything, but it's broken down. Local district orientation, that applies to two individuals, Ms. Boone and Ms. Agar. They both, uh, following first year board members have completed a local district orientation. They've both completed that. And orientation to Texas Education Code, and that is also Ms. Boone and Agar. And the following first year board members have complete the orientation Texas Education Code. The next one is post legislative update to Texas Education Code. The following board members have completed post legislative update to Texas Education Code training. Paul Mustela, Ben Benavides, Jan Mustella, John Samiego, Stephen Helscher. Kimberly Boone and Jenny Agar to take this training later due to the short time they've been on the board. They'll be finishing that soon as well. Team building. The following board members have completed the annual team building training. Paul Mustela, Kim Boone, Jenny Agar, John Samiego, Ben Benavides, Jan Mustella, and Stephen Helscher. All board members have. Additional continuing education hours. The following board members have completed the additional continuing education hours requirement. There are so many a year. They were supposed to get five hours a year, and we have completed those. The following people, Paul Mustela, Kim Boone, Jenny Agar, John Samiego, Ben Benavides, Jan Mustella, and Stephen Helscher. Next one is evaluation student academic performance and setting goals. The following board members have completed the biennial training on evaluating stu- student academic performance and setting goals. Paul Mustela, Kim Boone, Jenny Agar, John Samiego, Ben Benavides, Jan Mustella, and Stephen Helscher. Identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children. The following board members have completed the biennial training on the identification and reporting of abuse and trafficking. Paul Mustela, Kim Boone, Jenny Agar, Jan Mustella, Stephen Helscher. Uh, Mr. John Samiego and Ben Benavides, they are going to complete this training later on. They have both been scheduled for October the nineteenth and October the thirty-first for that training. The following is for school safety. The following board members have completed the biennial training on school safety. Paul Mustela, Kim Boone, Jenny Agar, Jan Mustella, Stephen Helscher, Ben Benavides. John Samiego, he was going to complete this also. He was going to have this done on October the thirty-first. Exceeding required continuing education hours. Uh, board member Paul Mustel exceeds the required amount of continuing education training by forty-one additional hours. Board member Kimberly Boone exceeds the required amount of continuing education training by twenty-two point seven five additional hours. Board member Jenny Agar exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by fourteen additional hours. Board member John Samiego exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by twelve additional hours. Board member Ben Benavides exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by twelve additional hours. Board member Jan Mustella exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by nineteen additional hours. Board member Stephen Helscher exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by twelve additional hours. And that concludes the report on that. The deficiencies are to be taken care of by the end of the month. It is part of the requirement, so it will be done. That is complete. Any comments or questions? Okay, discuss and consider approval of delegation of authority to superintendent under chapter forty-nine. I will say, Jimmy Kim, this is something we do annually to make sure in, Mr. Van Maitri.
Mr. Carroll. Yes, we do this every year. Uh, this is part of, chapter forty-nine used to be chapter forty-one. Consider the property wealthy district. Uh, our student, our wealth or student is considered excess. So we have to always send a little money back, but every year you have to approve the contract to send the money back, even though you really don't have a choice. So the way we do it now is, there's specific language in the, in the agenda or in the actual item that you're basically going to give Mr. Van Maitri the authority to exercise that. I upload the minutes from this meeting and the date of the meeting, and that takes care of the contract that we have to do in order to send money back to the state reluctantly.
Do you write that on the check?
In the memo?
No questions? Mr. Van Maitri?
Mr. President, members of the board, it's the administration's recommendation that the board approve delegation of authority to the superintendent under chapter forty-nine as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitri. I'll make that, Jay makes the motion. He would like the second, Jamie would like the second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. The next item is report special education maintenance of effort refund.
Mr. President, members of the board, this was a trustee request for Mr. Carroll to give this presentation.
I think there was a, maybe there was a little confusion, uh, maybe with the, some of the discussion with people that are running for the board, or just, just discussion about what exactly special ed maintenance of effort is. So I wanted to kind of try to clarify it again. The, the U.S. Department of Education, the purpose of it is, the special ed department, there are federal grants that the special ed department gets, just like we get Title I. Special ed gets funds specifically for the special ed program. The purpose of it is, they don't want you, just because you get this federal money, you still need to provide what you, what you normally do. I mean, we, we still have to educate all the special ed kids. So our local effort, uh, they don't want you reducing your local effort and supplanting it with this federal money. So in order to do that, whatever you chart, whatever you expense towards special ed, whatever that number rises up to, you can never go below, unless you meet some certain criteria. And the only criteria would be if, if you had less students, then you can spend less money. But if your student population may, uh, may, may, is maintained the same, you have to, you have to keep spending at that level that you spent, you spent. So what has happened is, uh, in the past few years, we have not maintained that expenditure level, and we've had to send some money back to the state. It does not mean that a special ed program or a special ed student did not receive services. It has nothing to do with the, the offering of service. It just means we didn't spend as much as we spent the year before on special ed. Now, I will tell you, uh, we, we've gone through three years of that. This last year was the biggest, actually it was for the twenty twenty-one school year. That was the biggest refund that we've had to send back. But the twenty, I'll tell you though, the twenty twenty-one school year was the year that, um, you know, our first six weeks is always in a prior fiscal year. So that was the year that the kids were, were pretty much fifty fifty remote or in person for the second six weeks, all the way through the fifth six weeks, and then everybody came back to six six weeks. We, we did not spend all our money mainly because of staffed, staff. We got, we had special ed vacancies. We didn't fill every position. We had teachers that left in the middle of the year, and we weren't able to replace them immediately. We had pairs that left, and we weren't able to replace them immediately. So we didn't spend the same amount of money, but it does not mean that a program, no program was not serviced, or a kid wasn't offered the services that were required in the ARD for that student. It just meant we didn't spend as much money as we did the year before, which was true in the entire budget. Because that year, we added about, I don't know, two million dollars to the fund balance, because also there was no, during that COVID year, when half, a lot of the special ed kids decided, the parents decided to keep them home and do remote instruction. So there was, there was no field trips. There was no community-based education. There was no, where they take the kids to the store and they teach them how to, you know, uh, or they take them to the movies, or take them out in the community and they do stuff. None of that, none of that transportation happened. So we just, we just had less expenditures. But it has, it has absolutely nothing to do with the bond. The fact that we have MOE and we might have to send some money back to the state. Even if we had spent that money on the special ed program, it has nothing to do with the bond program. It has nothing to do with building another school or improving the, the fine arts or any, anything else that we're doing. Fixing air conditioners, it has, it has nothing to do with that. It just means we just, we just didn't maintain that level. Now, there are certain things that you can do. Another example is, I'm going to have the same issue this year that just ended, but we ordered, we ordered a special ed school bus last October. It still hasn't come in. Well, since it didn't come in by August thirty-first, I don't, I can't expense it to last year. It'll come in this year. It'll get paid for this year. It'll count as a special ed expenditure this year. Then the next year, we could theoretically reduce our spending. We will get a credit of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars because we bought a bus this year. So if you buy, if you buy major equipment like that, the next year, they'll let you say, well, you spent, you spent that much money last year, so we'll give you a credit for the next year. There's a reason why you spent less money. You didn't buy a bus this year. But that, that's not going to happen until the next year. There's other criteria. If you had a high, if you had a student that maybe was in a residential facility and then they weren't, you could justify and say, well, we had this big cost for this student, but we don't have it anymore. You can, you can also, if you have a, a really experienced teacher that retires and you replace them with a, with a less experienced teacher that has less salary, you can apply and ask for credit for the difference of that salary, but you have to send all the department records. Send all the hire records. You have to send all the resignation records for those employees. And I've done that before to get some credit back. But it's just, and another thing is- But it's just, and another thing is, I think we try to provide everything we can for the special ed department, but I'm also not going to go spend a hundred thousand dollars just to spend a hundred thousand dollars. You know, we're, you know, if, if we need something, get it. But I would say for the 2021, for the 2021 school year, that was our, that was our COVID year. That was the most abnormal instructional year. Because for those, for, for the second through the fifth six weeks, we were at fifty-fifty remote versus live instruction in Miss Alado. Can, a lot of our special ed kids, the parents chose to keep them home and do remote instruction. So everything was, everything was remote. There was no.
We didn't have work base either. We spent a lot of money busing our students to the aquarium so that they can work over there, and that wasn't taking place. So there was a lot of expenses, like Mr. Carroll mentioned, the teacher. The staff was the biggest, and I mentioned that before. That's going to be your biggest area is salaries. Well, we had a teacher that year in early childhood and she left to go get surgery or something and she never came back. So that was early in the year and we couldn't find anybody because we got to remember other people have, they have contracts. They're not going to let them go to come work over here. So we couldn't find teachers. We also had another teacher at the middle school that left and we couldn't replace them. We had lost our licensed school psychologist and we couldn't find one. So we went for an entire year without one, which was an expense that we had the previous year. So people were just leaving education and it was hard because if they were leaving when school already started, other districts were not going to let them out of their contract to come here. So when you add up just those three salaries, that's way over a hundred thousand dollars. So that's not even including if Paris left. If, if all those people had stayed, we probably would have exceeded the, the budget. Just trying to meet the needs of our students.
And I have the same issue for the year that just ended. I'm, I'm making sure that I'm charging every eligible expense that I can to special ed to make sure that we're, that we're maintaining that. I will point out, you know, due to COVID, the feds gave us lots of, what's the right word? You know, they made, made exceptions to rules, like I'll tell you, like the ESA application, which is Title I. Normally you can only roll, if you don't spend that money, you can only roll over fifteen percent of the grant. So you need to spend at least eighty-five percent of your ESA money because they're only going to roll over fifteen percent. Well, they relaxed that rule because they knew people weren't able to spend all their money because of COVID. There's no relaxing in maintenance of effort for special ed. There was no, there was no concession for what we went through. There was no, there was no exceptions. And one other argument that I'll make about how they calculate the, the maintenance of effort and whether you're meeting it every year is they count every student as one full student. So a student that only gets three hours of speech pathology instruction a week gets counted one as a full student, just as much as maybe a kid that's in, you know, a B I or a adapted vet unit, you know, all year long. They're counted all the same. So when they take your, they, there are several tests that they do. They, they take your expenditures and divide it by the students and each per student. And then there's other ways, there's four tests and all you have to do is pass one of them to, to meet maintenance of effort. My argument is, these other kids that don't really cost a lot get just as much weight as the ones that do. So it's, I, I don't, I think there could be a better way of, of analyzing the cost. But there is no concessions. There's no exceptions. They made no, no adjustments because of COVID. So I don't have any statistics, but I, I was at the service center this afternoon for something else and I asked the lady that works there, like, you know, there are other districts that are in this. Just because of COVID and these recent things, everybody just, their, their level expenditures were not as high. But I can tell you.
There were a lot of.
I'll, I'll speak for the special ed department, but we're doing what we do. Every student has to have the A R D. We have to meet whatever is decided in that individual, that student's individual plan. We have to meet it and we've done everything we can to meet that plan. We just didn't spend as much as we'd spent the year before or the higher. Actually, the last time we met maintenance of effort, I think, was in the, in the seventeen, eighteen fiscal year. But the amounts that we've sent back were very, very small. This last one was the largest.
So Philip, what superintendent was in charge of this?
Well, I, whoever, who was here in the 2021 school year when we were in COVID, that was.
Rodney.
That was Rodney, I guess.
The twenty.
Well, no, he, no, he left in June of twenty, so that, that would have been, we were, had an interim until September and then Dr. Fernandez got here in September.
Question is that if we're exceeding this level of expense or, or that we would exceed this level of expense if they're, if on a normal statute, but yet we sent money back when there wasn't a COVID year, how, what's the, what's the plan for us not to send them back any money?
The plan is like right now.
Is it year-round school that's causing any problems because of the delay?
No, it's.
Is it, I mean, there's something.
We budgeted, we budgeted. I think, I think our, our threshold that we have to meet is, I think, three point eight or three point nine million dollars. We budgeted four million dollars for special ed. We just, we, we didn't spend it.
Didn't get the bus, didn't, you know, some things just didn't show up.
Didn't get the bus or we had gas in the vacant, like a parrot left and we didn't fill the paras position maybe for a month or two later. So there's another month of, there's two months of paras salary that was in the budget, but it didn't get, didn't get spent because the sub's going to make less than what the.
So what exactly do we, how much do we exactly send back?
For the 2021 school year, it was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. I can tell you the year before, the year before.
We had a lapse of leadership that year.
The year before, it was about thirty-two thousand. The year before.
I don't, hold on. But leadership has nothing to do, there's no students here.
Well, I mean, if we had a superintendent watching over what's going on, we wouldn't have this problem.
Wouldn't that be part of the administrative positioning as well, though? Stephen, I mean, you have to see, you have to see where you're going with this. I mean.
Someone to take care of this business. That's one that.
I guess, I guess part of that was the bus, right?
No, that.
That was not that year.
The bus is what's, the bus is what, is what's going to impact the year that just ended.
They said the salaries were the.
The salaries.
When we had the.
That was the year before because, because everything's a year behind. You have to wait till you get audited. Like, we're, we're getting ready to start the, the fiscal year twenty-two audit, the year that just ended, August thirty-first. I'm getting ready to get the file to the auditor. They're getting ready to audit that. We're going to get that audit done before Christmas break. Once the audit's done and the audit information is sent to the state, that's when they calculate. And I can ca, I, I can look at it right now and see what I've got to do to make sure that I'm charging everything that I can, that I legally can to special ed. But I can already tell, you know, where, where we are. And it is hurting. I was planning on having that expenditure for that bus, but that, that, it, it didn't get here, so I, I don't have it.
And the bus was for this year?
Yeah, we ordered the bus in October of twenty-one.
Yeah.
And it still hasn't come in. I don't even know if you have an update on November. November is when we're hoping.
Because in this last budget, there was no buses. Because I know I asked Patrick if, did we not have.
We didn't, we didn't, when I did the October amendments last year, I did an amendment to, to purchase the bus in October of last year. It wasn't in the original adopted budget, but when I adopt, when I, when I did a roll forward, which you'll see the amendment this year, the rolling, the projects that didn't get finished, I brought a separate amendment to, to purchase the bus in October of last year. So we had budgeted to purchase the one special needs bus last year, but it's, it's not scheduled to come in until November. So I'll get that expenditure in this, this fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
So what does, what does the next special needs bus, is it seatbelts or?
Wheelchair lift.
It has wheelchair lift. It has the clip, it has the things on the floor where you can secure the, the device that the, that the students are in and it's, it's, it's specially adopt, it's, it's, it has a lot of adaptations to handle. Special needs children. So I do not enjoy sending money back. I don't send money back. But like I said, I also, I can't charge something to special needs if it wasn't directly for the special needs program. I go through the salaries. If somebody's with a special needs kid, that portion of their salary is charged to special ed. I, I make every effort to, to, to meet that. But I also have to be consistent. I can't suddenly change how I allocate things. But I do everything I can to minimize this, this cost, this refund. But some things are, some things are beyond my control, like buses that take a year and a half.
They get here.
They get here.
Yeah.
But I will emphasize, no student is withheld, no student is denied something, no student is going without. If, whatever their I E P says, that's, that's what we have to, that's what we have to deliver.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Philip.
Thank you very much.
Okay, move on to discussion, approval of consent agenda informational items. Amendments, check, pay, register, certificate of tax later for twenty-twenty-two, quarterly investment report, enrollment report, regular and special call board meeting minutes. Mr. Van Maitre?
It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitre. Do you have a motion or administrative recommendation, please? Jan makes the motion. Kim and Jenny second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. Do you want to take a break or just go into it? The board of convening closed meetings and it's authorized by Texas Open Meetings Act to discuss the items, items allowed by Texas Committee Coach Chapter five, point zero seven one, zero seven six, point zero eight two, point eight two one eight, point eight zero three, and point zero eight four. Discussion regarding termination of probationary classroom teachers contract discussed employing the certified personnel, discussed duties, responsibilities, reassignments, employment termination, resignation of district employees, discussed superintendent goal. Okay, it is ten forty-one P M, October the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We're in closed session. It's eleven sixteen P M, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. We're back in open session. Mr. Van Maitre, please.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend that the board of trustees terminate the probationary contract of Jerry Booth for good cause and authorize me to send notice to Mr. Booth effective today, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I will make that motion.
I will second that.
Kim second. Any other comments, discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is the administration's recommendation that effective immediately, the transfer of Ms. Stacy Figueroa from a teaching position at Tulsa Midway High School to the part-time Tulsa Midway Executive Foundation Executive Director and part-time Tulsa Midway I S D Communications and Events Coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitre. Do you have a motion or administrative recommendation?
I'll make the motion.
Kim makes the motion. Jenny seconds. Comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? For or against?
Four.
Okay, six zero.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended that the board of trustees issue an educator probationary contract as presented.
Are you want the name?
That's what I thought for Naomi Davis Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitre. Jan moves second, please. Kim, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries six zero.
Mr. President, members of the board, the administration makes a recommendation to accept the resignations for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year for Ms. Jennifer Guevara, Ms. Melissa Jimenez, and Mr. Oscar Voskas.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitre. Motion or administrative recommendation? Jan, second, please. Jenny, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries six zero. Mr. Van Maitre, is any further business?
No, sir.
There's no further business. Have entertained a motion to adjourn. Jan makes the motion, second is Kim. Those in favor? Thank you all very much. It is eleven eighteen P M, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here. This is.